The St. Helena City Council in regular session for April 14th, 2015. The city council met in closed session for a little over an hour, beginning at four o'clock. Yes, it is.
Testing. I think we're not, we're not live. Can you hear it?
All right, let me, any event, let me begin with the city attorney. Did we have any reportable actions and if so, would you report them?
The city council did meet during this afternoon's four o'clock session to discuss those items designated on today's agenda as item two, A, B, C, and D. There were two reportable actions taken with respect to items two B, the two potential cases of initiation of litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956, point nine D four. The city council did give direction to initiate litigation in those two matters and the details, including the names of the cases, names of the parties, the court, all relevant details of that litigation will be made available to the public upon request, once it has actually been commenced.
All right.
No other reportable actions.
Very good. Mr. White, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, domination under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Black, roll call, please.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
City Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is public forum. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on matters not on our agenda. The time limitation is three minutes and under the Brown Act, we are not permitted to engage in any substantive discussion or action with respect to any item that's raised in public forum.
Good evening. Sandy Erickson, Scott Street, and I would like to reference the general plan meeting, which is scheduled for tomorrow. And my request is that the city council, at the initiation of the meeting, explain exactly which version of the general plan will be under discussion. There are approximately three versions out there now and the public, myself included, is very confused about which version will be under discussion tomorrow. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none? Oh.
Understood.
Okay, very good. If you could begin by stating your name and providing your address.
My name is Scott Decker. And I, you know, I don't know, they got these bike events that they shut down a main thoroughfare to the hospital. I got a problem with that. You know, the three-foot bike law is broken. I'm trying to, here, talk to you guys, anyways, I just can't believe that they, you, let me back up. They're blocking the Silverado Trail over here to the main thoroughfare coming up, right, for a bike event? Correct? Have they done it before? Hmm, I think so. I've seen signs and I, it just kills me going up and down the Silverado Trail and the highway that they don't need a license, especially with the farm tractors in California. I think the law is broken and I think that they, that maybe, I don't know what you guys need to do, but I, my opinion, you guys don't block the main thoroughfares for, I get fundraisers and stuff, but, and if I had a sick one and I need to get to hospital, what, I go through St. Helena? It'd be faster to run, you know? You know, I get, a little nervous here. I had a whole bunch of questions. They're gone right now, but I guarantee on the way home, I'm a, anyways, I still got Before I leave, I've got a question for everybody here. What is the minimum speed limit with a car to drive down a highway or state route? When I, state route, meaning Silverado Trail. I know you guys don't have to answer that, but Thomas and Paul, hmm, you guys, I would say, but I, I don't know what to say. When I'm going fifty-five or even training my kid, that's fourteen, fif, whatever it is, I don't know. You know, you're training him to do everything. How can you write somebody up with a DUI? What is it? Let's see, if, if you're drunk and pub, public, what is it? Point oh eight? I don't know. So that tells me if they don't have a license on a bike going down the Silverado Trail, but I know nobody on these bikes go to these wineries and then they go to these fancy restaurants and then they wine taste again. There's probably no bike companies in the Napa Valley. Wait, let me back up. Two thousand and fourteen DUIs, Sonoma County, seven hundred. Napa Valley, six hundred. What is a BUI? Is that a boat? Is that operating a boat under the influence or is it a bike? So if I got a bike and I'm blowing a, I don't know, point oh eight? Hmm, I don't know. I, I'm just kind of curious if anybody can answer what the minimum requirement on the speed is on the highway or the state route. I don't know if there's any attorneys there, but.
All right.
What? I love you guys still.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Any further public comment at this point in time? All right. I'll close the public comment and that takes us to reports by staff and city council. And let me begin with the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Phillips.
I do, I have two items to report out. One is, I just wanted to bring the community's attention. We have our second survey from our community engagement program. It's about community engagement. It's a short survey. It's available online or also by paper. The first survey we did was for the budget and that was online only and had a much shorter timeframe. This is up now and available on our website and will be open through May fifteenth. And the questions are really about how do we engage with the community? How can you engage with us? How can we open up those lines of communication? And so we hope everyone will go look for the survey. And we're also going to do some booths and try to get some interaction in the community as well with paper surveys and, and do a little bit more proactive approach with this survey. So we're very excited about it. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's up and, and we hope that people will participate. And the second item is on April twenty-fifth, on Saturday, we're going to be doing a grand opening of McCullough Park. This is very exciting for us. This has been in works for three years and so we'll have some festivities. It'll take place between eleven and three with an official dedication at one o'clock. And we hope that the community, the council, will come out and join us and celebrate the opening of this neighborhood-inspired, neighborhood-built, blood, sweat, and tears park. It's, it's really an example of community engagement and the love and care that the community has to be able to build a park like this. It's really great. So we hope everyone will come out and join us on Saturday.
And that's in the Cornella area?
Yes.
All right. All right. Ms. Mitz?
Nothing.
Ms. Black? Mr. Palmer?
I have nothing.
And Mr. Carnegie. And I know we're going to get to Ms. Baker in just a minute. All right. So that brings us to, oh, council. Does it, any, does any member of the council wish to raise anything at this point briefly?
Well, I just was gonna, I would just like to add a little, just a little bit to what Jennifer just said. In case people don't know, Stephen McCullough was, grew up in St. Helena, attended the local schools and was a Boy Scout leader on the trip in the High Sierras and was killed by a lightning strike in two thousand and five. So this is the tenth annivers, this summer will be the tenth anniversary of that and his friends have gotten together and they have a Stephen McCullough Fund. They raise money. And so this is a part, a public-private partnership with his fund and the fund in his honor and the city. So really encourage everyone to come.
And the mayor has nothing either this evening. That takes us to presentations and public recognitions. And I think I'm going to need a drink of water before we start. Ms. Baker or library director? Oh, I know. And so this is a proclamation for National Library Week, April twelve to eighteen. Whereas, National Library Week has been a national observance each April since nineteen fifty-eight, providing a time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and librarians and for library use and support. Whereas, our library employees and volunteers work continually to meet the changing needs of our community, providing resources, services, and programs for all and bringing services outside of library walls. Whereas, the library and its staff brings together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. Whereas, libraries are the great equalizers, providing access to information, recreation, cultural experiences, and more, free of charge. Whereas, as local leaders, we make an investment in the future of our community by supporting our library and private donors, grant makers, and foundations who invest in libraries likewise recognize the value of libraries for individuals, our city, and our nation. Whereas, the return on this investment is evident in the commitment the library makes to the community and even more so in the investment that individuals make in themselves as library users. Whereas, the city of St. Helena this year celebrated a hundred and forty years of library service. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, mayor of the city of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim April twelve through April eighteen, twenty fifteen, National Library Week. I encourage all our residents to visit the library this week and every week to take advantage of this indispensable community resource. Lives change at your library. There you go. Do you want to say a couple of words?
Just thank you very much. And if you haven't already heard, if you come by the library this week, you can get a free paperback off of our sales, oh, there's actual library staff here. Hey! Yeah, so you can get a free paperback from our sale cart. And today, we, the library gets a whole week, but the library staff gets a day. It's also National Library Workers' Day and today we celebrated with nachos. Oh, that was also Chris's birthday. So, so thank you all very much and I'll be back.
All right. Our next proclamation is to the Give Big St. Helena Steering Committee. If members of the Steering Committee would come up, please. And this one's a challenge because there are quite a few names and I probably am going to stumble over one or two of them. All right. Give Big St. Helena. Whereas, the city of St. Helena, acting through its city council, wishes to express its appreciation for those who have generously supported Give Big St. Helena. And whereas this March, members of the St. Helena community are joining together to raise funds and awareness to support and improve St. Helena's public schools through a community-driven program, Give Big St. Helena. And whereas, community members and businesses have generously provided their support for this important program. And whereas, St. Helena, St. Helena's four public schools, their students, their educators, their administrators, and the St. Helena community as a whole will enjoy valuable and enduring benefits from their generosity. And now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of St. Helena, county of Napa, state of California, and on behalf of the city of St. Helena, wish to honor, recognize, and congratulate Spotswood Winery, Trincaro Family Estates, Jim and Stephanie Gamble, two anonymous friends, Continuum Estate, Gotts Roadside, Julie and Gary Wagner, Marsha Mondavi Borger and family, Timothy Mondavi family, Kathy and Frank Dolzler, Alexander and Cessna Barrett slash thirty-eight Real Estate, Ron and Susan Krauts, Anna Canales and Bruce Strublow, Bachan Gilliam Kroger Architects, Christina Abreu, Cotrell Cutting Family, David Minor, Grace Family Winery, Joan and Andrea Robinson, Mark Nelson and Dana Johnson, Sarah Godd, St. Helena Oddfellows, Stephen C. McCullough Fund, the Anac, I knew I was going to fail on this one, the Anagostis Stakkis Family v. Situi Winery. On this important and generous support of Give Big St. Helena and acknowledge the many benefits conveyed to our public schools and our community through their support, the city council urges all citizens to join in us in celebrating their generosity and commitment to St. Helena. Now, is there, please remind us as to how much was raised and whether you can still give even though we're beyond the twenty-four?
We raised two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Very good.
And we still can. Yes. Yes.
And hopefully still count it?
Yes.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Okay. Great. Thank you. The next proclamation is for National Crime Victims Rights Week. And do we have a representative from the district attorney's office? And you're the victim services manager? Okay. And I know I'm going to mispronounce your name, but is it Yuka Kamishi?
Yuka Kamishi.
Yuka Kamishi. Okay. Very good. Wonderful to have you here. National Crime Victims Right Week, Rights Week, April nineteenth to twenty-fifth. Whereas, in nineteen eighty-one, President Reagan first declared Crime Victims Rights Week to help focus the nation's attention on the impact of crime on victims. And whereas, crime imposes devastating emotional, physical, financial, spiritual, and social impact, not only on victims and survivors, but also their family, members, friends, neighbors, schools, and the entire community. And whereas, this year's theme, Engaging Communities, Empowering Victims, emphasizes the role of the entire community individually and collectively to provide the necessary support, assistance, protection, and safety as victims and survivors of crime cope with the short and long-term consequences of crime. And whereas, Napa County District Attorney's Office Victim Services Division is joining forces with victim services providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout the county of Napa and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore, I, Alan Galbraith, as mayor of the city of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim the week of April nineteenth through twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, as National Crime Victims Rights Week and affirm St. Helena's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs during National Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year and express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned their personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community. Thank you very much. Did you wish to say a few words?
That would be great.
Go ahead, please do. I need to sign.
My name is Yuka Kamishi, victim services manager at the Napa County District Attorney's Office. On behalf of District Attorney Gary Lieberstein, who was not able to join me today, I would like to thank you for the proclamation. This proclamation is an important component for us to educate crime victims in the community about victim assistance and community safety. I would like to tell a little bit about what we do at the Victim Services Division. Last year, we served over fifteen hundred crime victims throughout Napa County, including St. Helena. We are here to assess their needs and safety, help them navigate, go through the criminal justice process, and advocate for their needs. We also reach out to different communities throughout the year, but we do focus on this week and reach out to different communities during that week. And two of the advocates will be at the Reander Center during that week also. So, once again, I appreciate your support on this. I wanted to let you know we can be easily reached by phone or via website. I brought some brochures, so perhaps I will give that to Ms. Black. We can, people can call if they would like some information or need assistance. They can call us at seven oh seven, two nine nine, one four one four, and we will be happy to help. Once again, thank you again for proclaiming April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of this year as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Thank you. All right. And we have one final proclamation, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And do we have a representative from the Napa Emergency Women's Services Group? Good, terrific. And your Judy Durham? Wonderful. All right. I didn't have a chance to sign these beforehand, so let me just do this right now. Very good. So Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April twenty fifteen. The month of April twenty fifteen is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in California and throughout the United States. This year's campaign is dedicated to creating safer campuses through campus sexual violence prevention and healthy sexuality. It's time to proclaim our commitment to safer campuses and brighter futures. It's time to act. Safer campuses, brighter futures, prevent sexual violence. Whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that healthy sexuality means having the knowledge and power to express sexuality in ways that enrich our lives. It's about every person being able to make consensual, respectful, and informed choices. There is no room for pressure, violence, or control. We will challenge unhealthy messages and stereotypes on campus, in our culture, and the media. We will use our voices to counter misrepresentations and promote respect. And whereas, we will use our voices to share information and skills to support sexual violence prevention and healthy sexuality on campus, learn from one another, and model the respect and safety we all deserve. We will connect with resources to empower us to build healthy relationships and healthy futures. For over thirty-three years, Sexual Assault Victim Services, a program of News, has led the way to promoting healthy sexuality and prevention of sexual violence on campus by providing twenty-four-hour hotline services to survivors and their significant others, offering prevention education, responding to emergency calls, and by offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during forensic medical exams, all criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. And whereas, News Sexual Assault Victim Services for Napa County requests public support and assistance as it continues its effort to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. With leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in promoting healthy sexuality and preventing sexual violence in the city of St. Helena and throughout Napa County through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. In collaboration with News Sexual Assault Victim Services, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions. We can all create positive change for safer campuses and brighter futures. It's time. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Alan Galbraith, mayor of the city of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim the month of April, twenty fifteen, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in St. Helena, and I commend this observance to all citizens. So, thank you very much. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much. You have always been so supportive of Napa Emergency Women's Services and our programs and we truly, truly appreciate it. As the proclamation indicated, sexual assault on campus has become a real big issue in the United States. In fact, it triggered a Senate Subcommittee hearing that looked at Title IX and all the money that was given to the various universities. They tend to under-report sexual assault and a lot of other crimes that happen on campus and that they wanted to stop that as best they could. So in keeping with that, we have licensed the documentary entitled The Hunting Ground, which is a documentary that was shown at Sundance Film Festival this past January. And it is an Academy Award nominee. It will be shown on CNN sometime later this year. And as I said, we bought the rights to show it one time, this coming Friday, at Napa Community College in their little theater. It's free of charge and afterwards, we're going to have a panel discussion, so I invite you all to come. If you have girls, boys, that'll be going to college, if you have grandchildren who will be going to college, if you know people who will be going to college, this is a movie that everyone should see. I've left some posters in the back and invite everybody to attend. Thank you so much for all your help.
What time is the movie? What time is the movie?
Oh, sorry. The movie's at five o'clock, from five. It's ninety minutes and then there will be a panel discussion afterwards. And I'll leave these, I have a few of these, I'll leave them in the back. On the back. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on the consent calendar and I'm going to read through the items and as I do at each of our meetings, let me stress that members of the public, as well as members of the council, can pull any item from the consent calendar. And if it's pulled, then we will have a staff report and it will go through the regular discussion process. So listen carefully and let me know if you wish to pull any of these items. Item twelve, Consideration and Proposed Approval Resolution Approving a Professional Services Agreement with Interwest Consulting Group in the amount of eleven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for specifications estimate for the twenty fifteen pavement rehabilitation project and transferring two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six oh one from capital improvement project R seventy-one to R forty-eight. Thirteen, Consideration and Proposed Approval Resolution Adopting a Revised Conflict of Interest Code for the City of St. Helena and Rescinding Resolution twenty twelve dash seventy-six. Fourteen, Consideration and Proposed Approval Resolution for a Professional Services Agreement with Glen Mount Global Solutions in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred for a city of St. Helena remote terminal unit upgrades. And this relates to the Meadowwood Tank and Pump Station. All right, number fourteen is pulled. Oh, did you put?
Oh, yes, I'd like to pull thirteen.
All right, thirteen is pulled. Let's begin with thirteen and let me see to whom I would turn for a staff report. It would be Cindy Black.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. This item is a routine item. It is reviewed every two years and with changing staff and state law, then it can or cannot be updated. And so we have had some changes in staff and so we have added, I don't have it right in front of me, but we, we've done some changes and I've worked with the city attorney's office to make sure that by law, we have updated, we have updated language and we have all of the appropriate positions listed. Do you have any questions?
All right. Did you wish to speak to this, Ms. Erickson?
Yes. This, this particular issue, conflict of interest in a small town in which there are many interlocking relationships of work and social lives and family and all of that sort of thing, has proved to be a problem specifically with the Planning Commission this last year. And so the problem centered around, from what I could tell, the reporting and the extent of which on the Form seven hundreds, which is required every year by, I believe, elected and appointed's and city employees. So, a couple of questions. One is that it seemed that the new language didn't mention elected and appointed's. It mostly focused on city employees, so question mark one. And then the second question was the whole issue of clients. Now, we have several attorneys. We have people that represent other business interests and oftentimes, there is reporting in the name of the company or the firm, but not necessarily in terms of the client. And we have several projects in town which local people may be working with those clients and so it's very difficult for the city to, for the people in the city to see exactly where the interests lie and therefore to determine if there's any conflict of interest. So I am asking that people's client lists, if they're working locally with people who stand to gain on different city-related projects, be revealed on their seven hundred forms, which I think is fair. And, and that, that the city itself insists that those seven hundred forms are comprehensive. So those are my two questions is that. So those are my two questions, is the degree of comprehension, comprehension on the degree of, let's say, depth on the seven hundred forms, and also exactly who is covered by that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? All right, let me close the discussion. Let's deal with this, and then I'll go back to the one I managed to skip before we go to yours. All right. Does the city staff or the city attorney wish to make any further comment here?
I could comment briefly, just to say that I think that there may be some confusion between annual reporting requirements under the Fair Political Practices Commission's jurisdiction, the Political Reform Act, which is what we're dealing with here on the one hand, and conflict disqualification rules on the other. Those are two different parts of the, of the Political Reform Act. This Conflict of Interest Code deals with the former, deals with annual reporting requirements. The elected officials are, by the way, listed on this, and as are the designated employees in consultant positions. It was reviewed by my office, and it is deemed to be in compliance with the Political Reform Act's requirements. With respect to, I think, what the speaker was asking, which is when decisions are being made subject to conflict of interest rules, there are different conflict rules that can apply. And by the way, the reporting requirements that I was referring to previously are requirements that are set under the Political Reform Act, and the city requires no more or no less. It's, that's a law that is implemented through the Fair Political Practices Commission. The requirements of those Form 700s are set in accordance with state law. As for disqualification reporting or disqualification rules, that's a whole different set of regulations that we're not putting before the council this evening, but those are rigorous requirements, as all council members know, with respect to the circumstances under which your financial relationships and financial interests can prevent you from participating in any given decision that's before you. But the, again, the form that is before you this evening relates to your annual reporting requirements. It's really a fairly routine update that's done, as the city clerk has told you.
Let me ask one clarifying question. The resolution seems to pertain strictly to designated employees, and they're listed city employees, but the resolution or Appendix A is not covering electeds. Is that?
The exhibit to the resolution actually mentions the reporting requirement for, the, I'm sorry, on page two, refers to the reporting requirements for the city manager, the city attorney, the city treasurer, economic vitality director, Assistant ACM, mayor and council, and planning commissioners. So it is listed on page two of the exhibit.
Okay, that's a footnote, okay, or a note, fair enough. Is there any further council discussion? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the resolution adopting a revised Conflict of Interest Code for the City of St. Helena.
Move to approve?
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Then let me backtrack to item twelve. That remained on the consent calendar, so I would ask that item twelve be approved as our single consent item. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move approval of item twelve.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
All right, and then thirteen is going to be next, and then we'll get to fourteen.
Mayor Galbraith, I didn't hear your vote.
Yes. Sorry about that. I can see that I should have included fourteen in the last motion, but I didn't, so we'll just do it separately.
Well, I actually wanted to just, I wanted to make a comment on fourteen.
Okay, very good. All right, well, we'll consider it separately. We're, we're going to get to thirteen right now. Oh, thirteen?
She wanted to pull fourteen.
Oh, does anybody wish to pull thirteen?
We just did thirteen.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, sorry about that fourteen.
Move approval of thirteen. We just did that.
We just, we're all set.
We're on to fourteen.
We're on to fourteen, okay. Now.
Oh, I, I, did you want to make, I wanted to make a comment.
Let me begin with a staff comment on fourteen. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. Yes, this item is to approve a professional service agreement with Glen Mount Global Solutions to provide some RTU or skate upgrades for our remote stations at Meadowwood Tank and Pump Station. We've been having trouble with the Medrano Pump Station communicating with the police station, and then in turn communicating with Public Works. So there's been a lack of communication between the pump station and Public Works staff, so we don't know when the pump station goes out sometimes, and we've been getting a lot of false calls and unanswered calls. So this contract is to analyze the system. We think there's a radio communication problem between the station and the police department, so this, this contract will troubleshoot that, solve that problem for us, have calls go directly to Public Works staff instead of relaying through police staff, and then also add some low water level alarms to the tanks out there. Right now, the tanks don't have any level alarms in them, so we don't know what level they're at, and it's really, I think it's a mic. And it's, and it's really difficult to know, to operate the system, we don't know what the tank levels are.
All right. Any initial comment by council?
Oh, well, my comment, I don't, I don't, I think that this should be approved, but I just wanted to comment that we're spending this money for the Meadowwood, the Medrano subdivision and the Meadowwood Resort, which I believe is appropriate and necessary, but I just think it's another example of why Meadowwood, the Meadowwood Resort is in the St. Helena sphere of influence and should be considered for annexation.
Ms. Bonnet, you had a comment?
Well, apropos of that, my name is Bobby Monnet, and I'm speaking as a citizen. I was just having a question about that. Is there a contractual prescription to our requesting some financial contribution from Meadowwood for this infrastructure upgrade, which, you know, has their name at least on the pump? That was my question, I didn't know. And if it is not prescribed, is, is there any way that we could ask for that?
If you, yeah, like, I can respond to that. They are, they do purchase water from the city. They are water users, they're, they're, they may not be within the city limits, but they do buy water from us, so they are rate payer, the Medrano subdivision and Meadowwood.
Right. Any further council discussion?
So the answer is no. There's not a way to have them, there's not a way to cap, they pay, they pay for their water, and so they're part, they're one of our water service customers, but there's not a, there's not a, there's not a way to charge them for this particular expense, and it wouldn't be appropriate to do that either.
I see, I think there's a rumor, I heard, that they did not pay for the water, so that was, that's an erroneous rumor, obviously.
This comes out of the water operations budget, like any other improvement we would make in our water system, and our pricing of water reflects all of those costs.
Well, what I recall from the last water rate increase was that within a year, we would take another look at the, the cost to out-of-city users at some point. That did not happen at some point, that certainly needs to be revisited. And somewhere deep in the recesses of my mind, I have the feeling that there's a special charge, lift charge, that's in the rates for folks that are up in that area. But that would need to be double-checked, but I believe I'm right on that. In any event, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve item fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, new business. Item fifteen. Consideration and Proposed Approval of a Resolution Approving an Employment Agreement with Noah House? Did I get that close to right? To serve as the city's planning and community improvement director. Ms. Phillips?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm delighted to present this item to you this evening. As the council knows, we've been functioning with our very talented interim planning consultant, Victor Carnelia, for nine, nine, ten months now, and we did go for recruitment for this position in the summer of 2014. I had just joined the city as the recruitment was closing, and one of the commitments that I made to the council and to this community and this organization is, we only hire the best. And I think to date, I've proven that, and so we didn't find a candidate in that recruitment, and so we stopped, and I hired a professional recruiter to do a nationwide recruitment. That came to fruition just about a month ago, and through a rigorous interview process, the city has selected, and we do our selections as a team, Noah House to serve as our next community and planning and community improvement director, such a unique title. Noah comes to us from the city of Santa Rosa. I do know him from my time there. I didn't oversee the community development department, it wasn't one of the departments assigned to me, so he did not report to me, but we did work together, and I was able to observe his excellent work as senior planner with Santa Rosa. And so I can tell you, I was quite pleased when I saw his name in the list of candidates as part of our process. Noah has just recently received his bachelor's, his master's in public administration from Sonoma State. We all know when we're working full-time and have a family, to have the initiative and the drive to get a master's degree, with all that juggling is, is one of the things that really impresses me about Noah. He received his Bachelor's Arts Degree from Humboldt State University. He has over fifteen years of planning, project management, construction management, environmental policy, and public administration experience. He has worked on large projects and small projects, and I think for us, not only his intelligence and his knowledge in the planning arena, but also his community engagement, his style of working with the community, and a true commitment to that process was really important to me and to us. There's a difference in people who go through the community engagement process and tolerate it because they have to, and those who really engage and feel that they're getting something out of a community engagement process, and Noah is in the latter. And that's really what we're looking for as we build a team, is to really have that person be part of our community. And so I am delighted this evening to recommend that the council approve an employment agreement with Noah House to become our planning and community improvement director.
Okay, are there any initial questions from council before I open the public hearing? Does anybody wish to comment at public hearing? Seeing none, let me close the public hearing. Any further council comment?
Excited to have you on board.
Likewise. So I make a motion to approve.
Well, before you do that, I want to simply say how splendidly pleased I am that you're coming on board, too. A number of us have been deeply involved with the planning department, one way or the other, for a number of years. Both Mr. Pitts, Mr. White, and myself, we all served on the St. Helena Planning Commission. Mr. Doring, I believe, served on the Calistoga Planning Commission. You escaped the planning commission, didn't you?
I went straight here.
Straight to the top, so we're delighted to have you. And let me, let me have the motion passed first, and then perhaps a couple of comments.
Okay, now can I?
You may.
Approve? Okay.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Welcome, welcome, Noah.
Welcome. Please note, we're break-
No, Victor, I've been meeting with Victor.
And please note, we're breaking our no-clapping rule, which I typically enforce.
I really appreciate it, it does mean a lot to me. And just, I really appreciate the invitation to be here for this decision. It's a big deal for my family, I brought my lovely wife Nicole. We decided to leave the kids at home, we thought it may add a little too much excitement to the meeting maybe. But, you know, this is a big, big decision for, for our family, but also for the city, and I definitely recognize that, and I'm very honored to be a part of St. Helena. It's a wonderful community, it's an amazing place, I know I'm going to love coming to work every day. And I truly am excited to be a part of the team that City Manager Phillips has put together. She, you have an excellent city manager here in Ms. Phillips, and I am very excited to be a part of the team. I've met most of the other folks who are in executive management, and everyone seems to be stellar, and I just want to add to that. So I really appreciate the opportunity and the support, and I'm looking forward to coming to work, so.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Well, thanks very much. All right, this takes us to item sixteen.
What, what day do you start?
Items-
Not yesterday?
I did get an email yesterday with a couple of questions.
That's already coming. Item sixteen. Consideration and Proposed Approval Resolution Approving a Senior Management Analyst/Water Conservation Coordinator for total cost of eighteen thousand eight hundred in this fiscal year. There's not much of this fiscal year left. Let's see. Item sixteen, and the, this is Ms. Phillips, and she just-
Yes, I will be taking the place of Ms. Phillips in this item.
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
So, as you stated, this is, this item is to approve the position of Senior Management Analyst/Water Conservation Coordinator. The funding for this position is included in the current rate structure, and the cost for this fiscal year, which, as you said, is almost over, is eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and the next year's cost is one hundred and seventeen four seventy-eight, and that is the fully burdened rate for the position. You know, with the ongoing drought and increased pressures on groundwater management in the region, and the recent executive orders by the governor, more regulations coming down from the state water board, water conservation and groundwater management is going to be an increasingly important and critical issue to the city, and important for the city to stay on top of these issues and be proactive in water conservation. This position will allow the city to provide water conservation to its residents, and also have a presence in the regional water issues. So it's an important part of this, is not just the local aspect of implementing water conservation programs that are promulgated by the state, but also to participate in the regional groundwater meetings, regional water meetings, and stay on top of current legislation. The staff report does outline a couple alternatives, which involve not funding the position, and if we didn't fund the position, quite frankly, the city wouldn't be able to provide much level of service in this, this arena at all. It's, with the current staffing levels, we were difficult for myself or whatever other support staff in the city to, to implement a program or to attain, attend any regional meetings. And then the other option outlined is to fund it, use the funds designated for the position to contract with a consulting firm or private consultant, or maybe share resources of their agency. And while this is a feasible option, as staff doesn't feel like this would be providing enough level of service that, that our residents deserve in order to stay on top of the issues.
All right. Let me open it for a public comment. There is no public comment. Let me invite council discussion. I have a few words to say on this, but if others wish to go first, please do.
I, I just had a question or two, and I do think this is an important position that I think long-term we need to have. I see that it was included in the budget in '12, '13, not in '14, '15. What about '13, '14? Was it part of the budget? Is, is the money sitting there? And the larger question is, with our rate structure now, do we have this money available within the budget for this utility, such that we're not having to reach somewhere else to create this position?
So I can tell you that the money is in, in the rates, and so it's available, we can go ahead and utilize those funds, and they're, they're available on an ongoing basis. It's a little tough in, in looking at some of the, the records and trying to understand when it was in and out of the budget, and so I don't want to misspeak. We tried to provide the information that we had, we didn't want to hold up the item because sometimes it takes us longer to find really detailed information, and so the most important thing for council is to understand that it is in the rates, it's a service that we're expected, and, and was it not only as part of the rate increase, but that the council expected us to provide. We did do that through a temporary service for a while, but we really feel at this point, with the magnitude of the drought, the type of regional issues that are going to be going on, that, that we'd like to be, have it be a full-time position. And so it's there, the revenue is there to fund this position a hundred percent.
I guess I'm just a little surprised the revenue is there, because it's my recollection that we always, we discussed and contemplated this, but in the end, given our budgetary constraints, chose not to have this position there in the budget. So, and I'm, and I'm not, I, you don't even need to address that, because I'm not opposed to having this position now, but I don't remember it being, that's why it's specifically not in the budget in '14, '15. I'm pretty sure it wasn't in the budget in '13, '14 either. I don't know, I can't remember what year the rate structure was reconvened.
Eleven.
But in any event, I'm, I think that we definitely should have this position. My problem with it is, I just think the pay level is a little bit high, considering the fact that I think our citizens are extremely well-informed and pretty conservation-oriented to start with, so I'm not sure there's going to be a huge need for a lot of education and programming and that kind of thing. I do agree that, I just, in a perfect world, it would be fine, but it just seems like, given our budgetary constraints, the- given our budgetary constraints, the pay level is a little bit high to start with.
I understand, but it goes beyond, we really, we want to hire talented individuals. And so, you know, we need to pay reasonable salaries in this valley, quite frankly. This has a high cost of living, and so, we want to attract talented individuals. And you start getting into the lower categories, it's just more challenging to do that with this high level of deliverable. So, it's not only in the interaction with the community and having someone that they trust, who is intelligent, articulate, who can provide the information to our citizenry, it's also the opportunity to represent St. Helena in some of these regional meetings. And we got 1.2 billion coming in the next five years from the state. We need someone who can be part of those discussions, analyze that information, be sure that we're doing things properly, and try to see if there's opportunities for us to achieve some grants in the monies that will be coming from the state. And so, we can cut it back to a lower-level coordinator position, but you know, HR laws require then that that person work within that capacity. And so, we can't add on those higher-level, more professional duties. And so, when we looked at the job classifications, we really felt this category was the appropriate category.
That's one of the questions I wanted to ask as a follow-up, is I do understand that there's a lot of water conservation funding from the state coming the next several years-
Yep.
-that we should look at capitalizing on.
Yep.
And is that one of the major roles that this position would take on?
It certainly would. In a future agenda item, we also have a grants manager position that we're proposing to the council. And so, this is a very technical aspect of grants administration, and so, we see those two individuals working side-by-side. Grants is a very specialized field, but absolutely, understanding the legislation, understanding what grant categories are out there, then putting the grant application together at times can be very technical, depending on the types of grants we're looking for, whether it has to do with a facility or it has to do programmatic. And so, absolutely, I see that as a critical position, especially with the 1.2 billion. I'd really like to see us jump in there and see if we can't procure some of those grant funds.
I totally agree. I think it's very important for this, you know, given the drought legislation that has been passed and the governor's new position. And I think without having this kind of a position, we're not going to be able to get the grants and have that coordination. And to be able to just stay up with the regulatory, you know, atmosphere of what's going on, we need somebody in staff to be able to take care of that. And so, I'm very in favor of this.
Wow.
I could see a big plus and maybe some pretty sizable funds coming into the city through, you know, these kinds of positions and the programs that we'll be able to garner from.
I have just a few comments here. I went back and looked at the water supply plan that was issued to the city back in October 2010. I recall it vividly from those days anyway. This position was very much argued for by our outside consultants at that time. I have consistently argued for this position since that time. I don't see how you can run a water enterprise as we do without this type of position. You need someone that is, who is charged with analyzing the data. And it's not just residential customers. We have commercial customers, we have industrial customers. It's very unclear to me at this point that they are doing all they can to conserve water. It looks to me, from looking at the data but not having dug deeply into it, that the residential side is doing its job. And it may be that the others are too, but clearly, we need a person that follows this. And then, beyond that, occasionally, and we see it from time to time, a person like this can be looking at the, at what happens on a daily basis, what the meters are reporting, dealing with significant leaks if they show up, not personally, but making sure that they're tracked and dealt with. And so, I am strongly in favor of this position, and it certainly was funded in the July first 2011 rate increase. There's a line item in there for it, it just wasn't filled. And I always was of the view that the city should have filled it, and I certainly have said that publicly many times. So, I strongly endorse this position, and I endorse this position at the pay scale that you urge, because it is a person that is not just looking at our system, but also looking at how we are being impacted and will be impacted by state regulation. And we cannot afford to put ourselves in a position where we are not in complete compliance with state regulation and risk the potential fines that could come to us if we are not. So, I am fully supportive. Any further discussion? Ms. Black?
I'd like to take a different tact on the issue. I agree that we need help in this area. I would have liked for us to have explored more of a cost-sharing with other entities. I am familiar with how they do it in Calistoga, and certainly, Calistoga does not include all the same job duties. But they have two, one lead coordinator, one coordinator who works for her. Each one has nineteen hours. They handle a rebate program, they handle billing issues, they handle the audits in the residential area. They do not attend regional meetings. I've been told that the Public Works Director is responsible for that and that the manager there feels more, that that Public Works Director is fully capable of representing the city of Calistoga in that regard. So, I wholeheartedly agree with you, Mayor, that this position needs to be filled. I do not think it is a full-time position, from my experience and from what I've learned, you know, in researching the issues. The amount of money is certainly fair. I just, I wish we could do more to maybe look at consultants' cost-sharing, to share the burden, because these are regional issues. And so, you would think that we'd want to attack it on a regional basis. So, I don't know, I don't really feel comfortable, even though it is incorporated into the rate structure, that we can keep that person busy full-time. And I also feel that our Public Works Director is fully capable of doing much of the work, our Public Works Director is fully capable of doing all the work on a regional basis in terms of meeting with others, monitoring monies that come through. I'd rather have Steve Palmer do that work than somebody else knew that I don't know about. So, I'm resistant to spending the money on this without at least going through the effort of looking at cost-sharing.
I have a question. Is there a reason why this isn't combined with wastewater as well, with the concept of recycling and how important that's going to be into the future? And I know there's a difficult hill to climb, but I think long-term, we have to be looking at that?
Right now, it's in the water rates, but it certainly can be, and I agree with you. When you look at things like a tertiary system or things like that, you're going to start seeing, how do we produce recycled water? And so, water's going to become, it's going to be hard to split the two. So, maybe there's an opportunity in the future to be able to draw from the wastewater funds as well. I understand, and so, we did put, you know, the alternate options in there. I really feel from, you know, each city's in a different place. Calistoga's team has been together longer. I think that they are not facing the issues that we're currently facing of rebuilding an organization and trying to make things right. And so, our ability to engage in some of these regional issues and do some of the work that maybe other department heads can do in other cities, we're very challenged right now. One of the reasons we made it a Senior Management Analyst is it gives us the opportunity for more flexibility. And so, we hire very talented individuals, and so, we thought that having that flexible title would also give us the opportunity that if I had a project or I needed help with something in the city manager's office, I could charge the time to the city managers, to a general fund, and have them work on some special projects if I needed it. And that's why we did that. We wanted someone who, if they did have some downtime, right? If all of a sudden, things were a little bit slow and maybe there was a pause in some of the regulations that were coming out, that we could realign that individual and assign them to do some other work. And so, you're seeing that as we're coming forward with some of our positions. Because we're such a small city, we're really looking at, how many things can one person do? And we're trying to be as flexible and creative as we can. So, that was one of the things we built into the position, was that flexibility, that they could come and do some work for me.
It seems to me that we're also at a critical time where there is going to be a large amount of funding available for water recycling, water resources. And maybe this is, you know, a five-year position, but it allows us to take advantage of the influx of resources for what really is our most precious resource. And maybe one of our biggest challenges in this community. So, I understand what you're saying, Paul, but I'm fully standing behind endorsing this position for that reason. And maybe in five years, we don't need to continue to have that full-time, but let's get after it while we can and while there's funding available to help make sure we're secure for the long-term.
I would only add that to my surprise, the water systems between Calistoga and St. Helena are quite different. Calistoga uses about seven hundred and fifty acre-feet per year, whereas we use perhaps nineteen hundred acre-feet per year. So, there's quite a difference in the magnitude of the systems. I was surprised by the fact that Calistoga's system was much smaller in terms of delivery than ours. In any event, I've said my piece on it. And so, Ms. Black, would you call the roll, please? Oh, we need a motion.
I move to approve the creation of this new position.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember White? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
No.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Okay. This takes us to item seventeen, and I think Ms. Mitts is the lead on this item. Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting.
Yes, thank you very much. As everyone knows, earlier this year, we presented the Annual CAFRA Report. So, it's a comprehensive annual financial report to the city council and to its citizens. And what this is, is just a background. It's an annual report that all municipalities are required to complete and fulfill. A secondary portion of the CAFRA, and it's usually released, we usually get it typically about a month to two months after the CAFRA is completed. It is a report on internal control and other matters. And what this is, it is provided to us by our auditor, and it points out any deficiencies of internal control processes that we might have. And it's meant to be a tool for the council and for the staff to look at, to address any deficiencies that we currently have in our internal controls, and to make recommendations on fixing those controls. So, what I'm going to do is just briefly, I don't want to bore everyone and read the report, but I'm going to very briefly give you an overview of the highlights of the report. Two things were addressed with the city of St. Helena finances on our internal controls. The first was a material weakness, and the official definition is it is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the city's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. The second item that was pointed out to us were significant deficiencies. So, this is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies in internal control less severe than material weaknesses, yet important enough to merit attention. So, those were the two items, or the two types of deficiencies and weaknesses that were identified in our internal control. Out of, there's four items that were listed. We had two material weaknesses and two significant deficiencies. Four, all four items, our auditor identified, there's a criteria, so basically, what should be happening? There's a condition at the time of the audit, what was the condition of our financial statements? The context, so a brief description of what the context was. The effect is how it impacts the city's finances. The cause, the reasons the weakness or deficiencies exist. Recommendations, and so, the auditor makes recommendations, and then what we do is we, it's a views of management. So, both Jennifer and I worked together on actually coming up with the recommendations. We were in agreement with every single one of the recommendations that the auditor had made for us. As far as the cause, three out of the four, the cause was, it was the auditor's opinion that the cause was due to severe lack of staffing and just not having the ability to get some of these things done on a timely basis. There is only one that was not caused by not having enough staff. So, I'm going to really briefly go over the four and just kind of point things out. The two material weaknesses, the first is finding 2014-1. It's for capital asset accounting and depreciation. So, what is supposed to happen is on a regular basis, whenever we acquire any new assets over ten thousand dollars and that have more of a year lifespan, we are supposed to be recording those assets in our books so we can do, from then, each year, we can depreciate those assets. That is something that had not been doing, that was not done at the time that the financials had closed. So, our planned corrective actions on that is update and reconcile all assets on a more timely basis, because it was one of the recommendations in the 2013 financials as well that just never, never was finished. And then, on October 28th, 2014, the city council did adopt Resolution Number 2014-82, and that approved a capital asset depreciation policy. So, we do have that policy in place now. And then, the third is for us to create internal procedures detailing the steps to take to record the new assets and asset depreciation, and this ties into one of the findings on one of the other items. And we do have one designated staff member now. Our management analyst is going to be the designated person to actually handle the capital assets and depreciation. So, the second finding was fund cash overdrafts and budgetary accounting. When individual funds do not have enough cash in the fund to handle the expenses or the expenditures, which we should never take that cash, we should never take that fund into a cash deficit. And part of this is going to be addressed a little later on in our FEMA OES presentation. And so, this was considered a material weakness because it is what happened when we had to do the 1.9 million dollar refund to FEMA OES. And it is, sound municipal financial management practices generally provide that if actual expenditures in a particular fund are significantly higher than what the original budget is, that it should go to council for approval, and that a transfer of funds takes place as opposed to having that negative cash deficit in an account. The planned corrective action is, both Jennifer and I absolutely agree with the auditor's recommendations, that we intend to fully comply with our city's budget and our municipal code, our resolution, our policies in place. So, we have committed to doing that and not let the cash deficit happen in an account. And then, also, regular review of fund balances and identify any accounts that could potentially have a negative cash fund balance and determine if it was an oversight in payment, or if it was things that were misapplied to the funds, which that happens occasionally, and we do a general ledger correction. The next two items were significant deficiencies. The first is citywide cash and investment accounting. What should happen, similar to your private financials, we should actually balance our checkbooks every month. And what happened was, when the auditor did come on site in August, our cash and investment policy, or our cash and investment accounts had not been reconciled to what our general ledger said since December. So, we were significantly behind on that. So, we, yeah, so we have been working on that, and our planned corrective action is actually to complete the reconciliations on a regular timely basis and immediately cure any issues as they arise. Some of the problems that we had last year when trying to reconcile the accounts, it was we changed over our financial software system. And so, unfortunately, because there was such a delayed response in reconciling our accounts to our financial statements, we discovered a lot of errors, a lot of problems that happened when we migrated, when we upgraded to our new Springbrook system, that we should have been able to identify a lot earlier. So, that's going to help reconcile that issue as well. And then, the final one is year-end closing reconciliation and procedures. Customary normal municipal accounting practices dictate that local governments reconcile all significant general balance sheets, revenue and expenditure accounts as part of the normal year-end closing process. And at the time the auditor came in August, the city had not reconciled and adjusted accounts as part of their normal year-end closing process. So, our planned corrective actions is currently, myself as well as some of the other finance department staff, we're working on written guidelines describing year-end reconciliation requirements. And we're anticipating that we're going to have these guidelines in place for the end of this fiscal year. So, when we do work with the auditing firm for this current year audit, we should have a lot of that in place. There's no financial impact to this report, and so, the recommended action is to accept and file the report.
All right. Are there any initial questions of staff? Is there any public comment? I'll close the public comment. You know, what impresses me always is the precision with which people in your profession speak. And precision in your profession is, in my view, of paramount importance. And clearly, we had serious issues, issues that we hope we don't see again, issues which I'm confident we will not see again, quite frankly. But we have to dig ourselves out of the issues, and the community broadly has to recognize that it takes time and effort and excellent staff to ensure that the books and records are kept well, and also that you can dig back in time and see what's happened to you. And we have new management, and I think they're getting their arms around the problem. I know they are. And that's to everyone's benefit. I know they are, and that's to everyone's benefit, and I appreciate it as mayor. Is there any further comment? I think we accept the report, right?
We do accept the report.
Second.
Ms. Black?
I didn't catch the who made the first.
I'm I'm in motion.
And I seconded it.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to item eighteen. It's FEMA OES refund update. This is the update that was promised to us at this time, perhaps five weeks ago, I don't remember precisely, six weeks ago. In any event, it's Ms. Phillips.
So I'd just like to take a minute to thank Director Pitt, no, Mitz.
That works.
That was too close. Director Mitz, right? I know. I don't think your wife would appreciate that.
Peter?
She really did the omen's work behind pulling all the information together to understand what happened. And, you know, when you go back in time, it's, these are challenging research efforts. And so I really want to thank her for the time and energy, her staff, her tenacity to put this report together, to write it in a in a way that I think is very clear, and I hope that it's helpful to the community and the council to understand, and also appreciate her thoughtful recommendations as we move forward. So I'm going to turn it over to April for the presentation.
Thank you very much. It is a labor of love, I'm not going to lie to you. So the little bit of the background, on the February 10th council meeting, we presented the the annual financial report to the council and to the citizens. Part of our report included a 1.9 reimbursement that was done to FEMA OES for a refund for our flood, our hazard mitigation flood protection plan that the city of St. Helena had. The discussion portion of it is the findings in this report come from several sources. Both Jennifer and I went through a lot of different avenues and resources, and we are continually finding finding things. So the process is still not done, there might still be stuff that comes up. But in this report, where we got our primary information was information received by contacting OES. OES, what they do is they've, the funding comes from FEMA, and it goes through OES, and so they facilitate it, and they work with the individuals that actually do receive the grant funding. So we did, we did have contact, correspondence, and many, many phone calls with with representatives at OES. We researched the finance, the finance documentation and files. And then we did also hire a private third-party investigator to actually conduct interviews with former staff members, just because we wanted to make sure that the interviews were completely impartial and that they could try to, try to ask some questions to some of the answers that every, you know, we as staff and then as council and as citizens wanted to address. So that's where the information came from for this report, the timeline of it. In 1998, FEMA declared disaster 1203, so you'll see DR 1203 on a lot of the documents, due to El Nino. What DR 1203 did is it allowed for 404 grant funding to be available from FEMA. 404 grant funding is specifically for hazard mitigation, and so that's where these funds came from. Total funding that St. Helena had received was over, a little over $8 million was the total funding we received. Between the years 2002 and 2007, the St. Helena received $3.5 million in grant funding. And then in 2012, the current finance, or the finance director at that time petitioned for another $4.5 million from FEMA. And so it was, it looks like from everything we tell is the additional $4.5 million that we applied for in 2012. Of that 4.5, 1.9 million is what we had to actually refund back to FEMA because we could not provide documentation for those, for those particular items. The ne, the next thing that happened is after we received the money, prior to FEMA closing out any of their projects, they do provide, or they do, they do an audit on any entities that had received funds. And so what they did is they came in, they were on site for about a week, and they worked with the finance director, finance staff, in trying to locate all the documentation needed to justify the funds that we received through FEMA. And then what their findings were after that week-long process is their findings came up with the with the $1.9 million that were either unaccounted for, were allowable, or were were unacceptable as far as that goes. So the next, the next section gives a timeline, I'm not going to read them verbatim, but it's a timeline of the correspondence that happened between FEMA OES and the city of St. Helena. So FEMA sent a notification to OES, OES sent it to St. Helena stating that they were deobligating those funds because we could not provide the proper documentation. Every time that they gave us a letter informing us, we had 60 days to file an appeal. And so an initial appeal was filed by the finance director with a justification for, I believe it was at $938,000 out of the $1.9 million. OES came, came back to us and asked what we used as as documentation and justification for that $938,000. The finance director said that they looked at the projects and they compared it to the circular that was provided to us by FEMA OES for the original grant. So that's what they said they used. After that, FEMA OES came back and said that they, although they appreciate the information, that they did not agree with our findings and they were deobligating the funds, and again, offered us a 60-day, 60 days to appeal that decision. After that, that last, or the last letter that came to the finance department, they did have 60 days, prior to that 60 days being, being exhausted, the previous finance director did email OES stating that she would not be able to complete the detail asked for before she left, and that she did not think anyone in St. Helena had the detailed information that FEMA was requesting. And so that was something that she had sent to FEMA OES. OES did respond back saying, I just want to confirm in writing that that you are deobligating the funds. And at that point, she responded saying her and the current city manager at that time brought, did agree that they they needed to deobligate the funds. So after that point, they, we did receive the invoice from from OES for the $1.9 million. And then what had happened was they, it, we had an okay, on the, on the document, it says okay to pay per Gary, and then it had the interim finance director's initials on it, and all of the supporting document is documentation for this is behind the report. So they did do the refund to FEMA OES, and it did bring that fund balance in the negative approximately $1.6 million. One of the questions that that had been asked was if the city does have current policies for paying out these types of, these types of refunds or making any type of adjustment to the budget? And the answer is yes, the the city does have policies in place. The next section looks at the the current policy for the dispersments of funds. It is listed in the municipal code, it's listed in the budget document, and it's also listed in the budget resol, the budget resolution. And each of these items very clearly state that the city manager does have the authority to transfer appropriations between apartments, departments, so long as the total appropriations are not increased within a fund. It also says that the city council has an overriding authority of control on on any budget item. And it says the total appropriations in any fund may not be increased except by the city council. So all of our policies, three different areas, it does state that the city council is the only person, or is the only body who has the authority to be able to approve that type of expenditure that would have gone out because it would have, we would have had to make a budget adjustment and increase the budget. By definition, we talk about appropriations in here, so by definition, appropriation is an authorization by a legislative body, which is our city council. From doing the research on it, we had talked about several recommended policy changes to ensure that this does not happen again. The first is one thing that we do want to continue doing. It has always been the policy before, but I don't think it's really been done for a while, so we want to continue, is having quarterly, quarterly reports to the city council on the budget status. And we're recommending that this take place at regularly scheduled city council meetings, so not in a city manager weekly, not via email to the council members and your regular correspondence, but actually in a, in a public forum that is a documented forum. The second is to provide quarterly reports to city council on grant status to take place also during regularly scheduled council meetings. And we're proposing that the report should include, but it's not limited to, new grant funds that are being sought, so you're aware of what grants are out there, new grant funds that we've received, upcoming audit, upcoming grant audits. Every time you do have an audit, you typically have one to two months, if not more, notification that an audit is going to be taking place. Any audit results and any grant appeal status, so if there's any grant, if there's any appeals that we're doing for grants, providing regular updated reports to the council. One of, the third recommendation we are having is to provide a monthly check warrant list to council. This is something that had happened in the past, and over the past couple of years, it has, it had stopped occurring. So we're recommending that we do provide you monthly check warrant list to the, to the council for all warrants. And then we're also suggesting that we highlight any warrants exceeding a set dollar amount, for instance, $100,000, $50,000, whatever the council deems appropriate. And then what we are committing to do also on those reports next to the line item, stating whether that was an approved budgeted item, if it was approved by resolution, if, what what project it's approved for, so the public and the council is very much made aware if it is actually a budgeted item, and if it's not a budgeted item, that that you know we should have actually come to council to do a budget adjustment and approval on that item. The next item is that we as a team, the executive management staff, we do commit to following all process procedures and protocols set forth by the council by law or by city officers authorized to allow the same. The fifth is to create a comprehensive grant administration program. And what this would do is this would include a full review of the scope of work for each grant prior to the request for funds to ensure the availability, the ability to comply with grant regulations. For the additional $4.5 million that we received from FEMA, through our research, it was found that the general ledger was used to request the refund because it was for funds that the city had already spent. And so what, what should have happened is prior to, prior to the refund being sought, every single piece of paperwork should have been pulled to be able to justify exactly what composed of that $4.5 million. Using a ledger entry is, it's basically
Lazy.
I won't say that. It's, it's basically not doing your due diligence, and it's just looking over a spreadsheet of sorts, seeing that we paid out this particular contractor, this dollar amount, and then assuming that it was for flood protection and for hazard mitigation, as opposed to actually pulling the invoices and verifying every single thing. So that's what a proper grants administration program would do. They would also, this program would also closely monitor grant funding projects to ensure adherence to the scope of work designated for each grant. And several of the correspondences that we found, it did state that the scope, our interpret, the city's interpretation of the scope of work and FEMA's interpretation of the scope of work seemed to be out of line, but as anyone who's ever received grant funds know, whoever the person is giving you the money, their scope of work is gold, and that's what scope of work you actually, you actually follow, and their, their interpretation is what you actually want to look at. The next thing to do is for reimbursement grants, funds are to be requested only after all documentation, documentation has been reviewed for compliance with the scope of work and all supporting documentation is accounted for. The next item that the, that this program would do is that all grant funding documentation is properly maintained for the required timeframe. The city does have, we do have document retention schedules. However, if we receive outside funding, each different funding source has different time, time requirements that you have to keep documentation. So even if the state or state, federal policies say you can destroy it after maybe three years, if you are receiving grant funds, for instance, with FEMA, FEMA requires you to keep all documentations from seven years, seven years after the close of the project. So even though we started receiving funds in 2010, this project closed out in 2014, we legally have to keep the records till 2021, because they can come by, come back at any point and actually do an audit on it. And then also exhaust all appeals, this, having extensive program, would exhaust all appeals available to the city if refunds for grants are being sought. We want to make sure that we don't, we don't not file every single appeal possible. After talking to several people at OES and and other people who do, all they do is do grants, is they said, the last thing FEMA and OES wants to do is actually have to do a refund to you because it creates a lot of work on their end, and then it also opens up those grant funds for other entities to apply for refunds, you know, using those grant funds. So it takes a lot of extra work. So several people I talked to said the last thing they want to do is refund, so they, they like you to exhaust all of your, all of your appeals, and and they want you to be able to keep the money. The last recommendation that we have is to approve a full-time permanent grant manager position, so that's the next item on the agenda tonight. And what this would do is it would allow three main things for this position. It would allow forensic research for awarded grants, including the $1.9 million FEMA OES refund. And this will also include all aspects of seeking reimbursement for a portion, or all of that FEMA OES. After talking to several people who do, do grant funding, and they're very familiar with the process and working with FEMA OES, and it is possible that we might be able to actually seek some of those funds or find other grants available that we can get some of that funding refunded by other grants. The second thing that this position would do is to create a comprehensive grant administration program for the city. And then the third thing is seeking and securing grant funding for various projects and departments. As we stated earlier with the water, with the water money that's coming up, there, there is a lot of different funding available out there, and having the proper person in place to find that money for the city, I, I think would be very, very beneficial. There's no recommended ac, action on this particular report. There are attachments to it, and so if anyone has any questions, I know it's, it's long, it's comprehensive, it's detailed, and there's more information out there.
I have one question. On this, on this list attached to their June 25th, 2013 letter, there's a list of expenses that were U categorized as U unallowable, Q questionable, and A allowable. And so the ones, the allowable ones that we, that were deemed part of the 1.8 million, was it just because we didn't have backup, or was it pre-2007?
It was, it was, if it was pre-2007, there was some documentation there, but not all documentation. And so from my correspondence with with OES, it did sound like some of those were because we actually did not have the proper documentation.
But when I read through, there's two, actually two lists. There's the, the list they sent to us, and then there's a distilled down list of ones we came back and said, hey, by the way, it's about $983,000 here that we've looked at and we think these should be supportable, they were either Q or As. A couple of questions. So the U's, which were unallowable, they mostly seem to be relocation assistance, and, but then there are a couple of relocation assistance that were Q's questionable that may have been accepted. Is that just outside of the purview of this type of grant money? It's not, moving someone out of the way of the, of the floodplain, I guess, isn't, wasn't allowed in this?
Well, some of the
Wait, 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 one at a time, please, let the
And then secondary to that, so that's one, one question, but related, when we went back and said this other $983,000, right, they came back and said, it doesn't seem to be enough backup here. And Karen's response was, I can't get that backup before I leave my post in this job. So if we can find the backup, could we have a chance of getting a refund of at least that 983, and, you know, can we comment on that?
That is something that we'll have to look into. What happens with 404, 404 grant funds from FEMA? Once the grant is closed, it's closed. And so once we refunded the money back, another entity, more than likely, because this was a, you know, federal, it was a statewide grant for California. And so what had probably happened was any other entity that might have had some outstanding funds that they sought reimbursement for, more than likely, they sought that reimbursement. All the funds were spent, they, they do not add anything extra to that, to that grant. And so it is, from what we've heard from FEMA OES, it doesn't sound like they would reopen it, but we are going to exhaust all avenues to make sure that they aren't going to reopen it. And if they don't reopen it, we're looking at seeking other grants from FEMA OES where those might be allowable expenditures.
Oh, I was just going to say that I think that one of the, one of the explanations for this is when we started the flood project, a certain number of Vineyard Valley units were removed, permanently removed, and I'm guessing that some of the relocation that was allowed may have been related to those units and not necessarily somebody who was flooded. I'm not sure about that. But I also just want to point out, I'm sure you probably didn't find documentation of this, but when we started the flood project in 2008, when the construction started, we, we did pass a, a, I don't know if it was an ordinance, but we had a rule in place that any check cut over $10,000 related to the flood project in any way, shape, or form needed to be approved by the council, and guessing then that obviously did not.
I had not seen that documentation.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions of staff on item eighteen? You're not requesting any action with respect to item eighteen. We'll move to item nineteen in just a moment, but I've got a couple of comments, myself and most other council members wish to go first. First of all, I want to thank staff once again for the substantial effort that went into bringing these facts to life. The staff report is an excellent report, highly readable, even if written by accountants, you know? It's very clear that the city was informed of its appeal rights. It's very clear that the city was informed of its appeal rights. It's very clear that the city did not meaning, meaningfully pursue those appeal rights. To me, when you read this documentation, it comes across that senior staff, former senior staff essentially gave up on the matter, just gave up. Obviously, the fiscal impact is large. And, uh, I think for all of us, this incident is exceptionally, uh, upsetting. And I'm, about the only, about the only, uh, further comment I can make is that, uh, is that, uh, you know, I hope that there is some further recourse, obviously, uh, with FEMA. But I can also understand that once you've refunded the money and the money has gone to, uh, other uses, uh, that your, uh, that your position, uh, is compromised. Uh, and, uh, yet, uh, uh, obviously, uh, staff is committed to doing whatever it can to, to mitigate, uh, the situation. And then, uh, that moves us, I think, to the next item since, uh- Oh, uh, is there any public comment? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the staff report said that, uh, Mr. Broad had yet to be interviewed and I'm wondering if he has been interviewed and if, and if any further information came from that interview.
Good question.
As far as we know, the interview had not taken place as of yesterday. And so we are waiting, we, the interviews had been completed for the other two staff members and Mr. Broad has not been completed yet. And as soon as it is completed, if it changes any of the information, definitely report back.
All right, any-
He's doing the interviewing. I heard it, a third-party investigator.
Yeah. Is, is there any other public comment, uh, Ms. Minette? Keeping it to item eighteen, we'll get to nineteen in just a moment.
I was just wondering how to get a copy of that report. Is that online? Was it, eh, eh, yeah?
Are you referring to the staff report? Oh, yeah, the staff report is online. It's part of the regular agenda. It's online and if you click on the agenda item, I think it's agenda item number nineteen, if you click on it, the full report will pull up.
All right. Uh, so no action is sought, uh, with respect to this item, uh, Ms. Mits, I think.
Can I just ask one question?
Oh, yes, of course.
There's a mention of three point five million dollars in the Measure A fund right now. Can you, uh, talk to us about that a little bit, how we can access and when we can access those funds?
What is happening with the Measure A money because it's getting close to the sunset of Measure A? Um, the, the authority took out bonds on behalf of several, several entities that are part of the authority. And what they use is they use the proceeds from measuring money to be able to pay down the bonds. And so that, that enabled the cities and entities to get funds early. Since it's getting close to the sunset of Measure A, what they are doing is they are actually holding the funds there to ensure that we, we can, or so that, so to ensure that they can pay back the debt obligation. So currently, the total debt obligation is five point two million dollars. Right now, we have three point five million dollars in Measure A funds plus approximately about one point two million dollars of future funding that's going to be coming in from the city of Napa for a loan repayment. So as soon as those two totals plus the Measure A funds that come in exceed the five point two million dollars, we can do the drawdown, additional drawdown to be able to pay back Measure A funds.
Thank you.
That's having the numbers in your head, isn't it?
Well, I want to make one last comment. You know, it's easy to, because of the lack of documentation, to say to ourselves that sloppy job and, and it's upsetting that we've had to refund this money, but it's also possible that perhaps we weren't careful in, in terms of how we interpreted what could be spent on, with, with these funds, how we could spend these funds. And so I think on a forward basis, the lesson we can learn is that we, we maybe need to be careful and perhaps conservative in terms of how we interpret grant funds and how they can be spent, so we don't find ourselves having to write refund checks in the future, right?
Well, I think that's going to bring us to the next item and the importance of a grant administrator who understands what the requirements are uh, from, uh, federal and state agencies. And I think we already heard, uh, from Ms. Mits that those can vary, uh, among agencies. And so let's turn to the next item, item nineteen. Uh, and, uh, I think you probably substantially covered it, but, uh, uh, please, staff report.
I don't think there's too much more I can add to that. Um, as you, everyone is aware, on February twenty-seventh, we did have a goal-setting session to identify our priority objectives for the upcoming year. One of the major, the major priorities that we had was focusing on the overall goal of securing the city's financial future. Um, grants are a key revenue source that can provide essential funding for capital improvement projects, emergency preparedness, public safety, innovative community programs, you know, to serve our community. There are a lot of different grants out there and, um, having a dedicated staff member, we feel would really be able to research the grants, put together a grant program for us. And part of that, as, as Councilmember Pitts alluded to, was actually being able to look over what the qualifications are for the grants and make sure that we stay within those qualifications. Um, the responsibilities of this position, covered it during the last report, is to provide forensic research for awarded grants. That will include the one point five, or one point nine million dollar FEMA OES as well as our Measure A audit that we're going to be coming up at the close of Measure A, we, they will be conducting an audit as well, just to make sure that we have all the correct fund, all the correct items ready for that audit. It's going to be created a comprehensive grant, um, administration program and it's going to also look at seeking and securing grant funding. Um, currently, we do not have a dedicated staff member to develop a proper grant program. And we th- really feel that we're under utilizing the amount of federal, state and local funding that, that is available to the city. The fiscal impact, um, is the same type of position as the water, wastewater, um, or the, the water position. So it is a senior administrative analyst, a total of nineteen thousand dollars, um, we'd like to appropriate for the end of this fiscal year. And then for next fiscal year, it would be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollar, five, a hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. And that is salary and benefits. So that's just not the salary portion, it's overall compensation for the position. Um, so it is our recommended action that we do approve this position. Um, the alternate, um, option is if we don't approve this position, um, we really don't have the staff capacity to, to try to, try to seek out additional grant funding. We would have to do grant funding on a case-by-case basis on project and then we'd have to look at the staff available to actually administer those grants. Um, the other thing that we would look at doing would be hiring an outside consultant to come in and, and complete the forensic accounting for us that we need for the FEMA OES to see if we can actually get, recoup any of those funds or seek other grants as well as for the Measure A, because we do want to have full forensic accounting done for Measure A prior to the close of Measure A. So we have about a year and a half for that. And we want to make sure that we have everything in place prior to that audit taking place.
Any initial comments, uh, from staff, from council?
I think it's a great idea and I do think we better get started now on justifying that for this Measure A expenses.
I, I would only add, uh, that, uh, for example, uh, the removal of that, I always say that damn, damn. Uh, uh, is always on my mind because it's been on the city's mind since maybe nineteen ninety-six or nineteen ninety-seven. But there is an example where we're a million dollars short, uh, and where in fact, there might well be private funds available as opposed to federal and state, uh, funds. But nevertheless, funders have grants, they require grant administration. And my further understanding is that if you're successful in getting grants, at least with some grants, uh, the cost of getting the grant comes out of the grant itself. So there is some opportunity, uh, as you move forward to, to engage in some, uh, cost recovery with respect to the person that you're hiring. So with that, uh, is there any, uh, public comment? Ms. Erickson?
I'm sorry for being up here so often this time, but, um, the grant, uh, and also the water, uh, uh, positions are, um, extremely critical to this city. Um, Napa College, when I was on that board for twelve years, literally built that place on Judy Walter Burke's grant writing. She just died recently. But, um, I can tell you from years at City College in San Francisco that when you write a grant, uh, the people that review those grants, those are the same kind of people that work for things like CSI. I mean, they are forensic, you know? I'm not kidding. And you could be tossed out of the, out of the, uh, candidate list just if you use the wrong buzzwords because it connotes a sort of, uh, lax thinking or not being current. So, um, the competition for that is fierce, particularly in the state of California. And the people that don't recognize that huge amounts of income come from those grants, um, I would say, just judging from what I know about grant writing and having written some grants, that, uh, it's going to equal what TOT brings in if it's done really well and you have a real star at it. It is a science, it is an art form, and it's where the money comes from. And not only that, on the other end, no one keeps track of how many grants you got. The grants go to the people that do it right, no matter how many they already got. So, um, you know, it's, it is a money-making machine.
Well, let's, let's hope. All right. Any further public comment? Let me close the, uh, public comment. Any further council discussion? Uh, then, uh, I would invite a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the position as set forth in item, uh, nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
No.
Uh, Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to item twenty. I'm going to read the title. Uh, Appeal of the February three, twenty fifteen Planning Commission Decision to Deny a Demolition Permit, Parcel Map Use Permit and Design Review in Order to Demolish an Existing Single Family Residence, Subdivide the Existing Parcel into Two Parcels, Creating a Flag Lock, and Develop a Two, New Two-Story Single Family Residence on Each of the New Parcels at Eighteen Thirty-Seven Pine Street in the Medium Density Residential District. For better or worse, I live within five hundred feet of that property and therefore, uh, by state law, uh, I am ruckus and I give the gavel to the Vice Mayor, Mr. White.
So we'll give you time to leave and go home since this is the last item.
Wisely made last.
I'll take care of the adjournment. So we'll first hear the, uh, staff report, uh, from Mr. Cornelia.
Yes, um, Vice Mayor members of the, um, of the council. Council, uh, as you're a- aware, has a very detailed staff report in front of you that, uh, goes through, um, the project in, in, in detail and covers a whole range of issues. So I'm not going to repeat what's in there, but just kind of touch on some of the major points. In terms of the project itself, itself, staff has, um, a number of concerns, uh, significant concerns. And those revolve around probably three central iss- issues. One is the question of privacy impacts. The other's neighborhood compatibility. And, uh, the other one is remaining one, lack of compliance with the zoning code. Is also indicated in the staff report, there's a whole host of findings that have to be made by uh, any decision-maker on this project, by council in relation to the use permit, parcel map, et cetera, uh, based on the nature of the, the development project as discussed and analyzed in the staff report. Uh, staff feels it's, it's not possible to make those findings. In terms of getting, touching on the zoning code, uh, aspect of the project, there are a number of concerns. One, um, having to do with the, um, the width of access to the flag lot, not complying with the, um, code requirement. Um, the actual lot as it currently exists is substandard, at least in terms of its, um, rear width. Um, and a lesser issue, but still one based on, on the way the plans are currently submitted is, uh, there's not adequate pro- parking provided for the second units. And I guess remaining issue touched on also in the staff report is the timeliness of the appeal. Uh, a couple of other issues worth, um, bringing up. One is the issue of past precedents. Uh, this issue came up, uh, during the planning commission process. Uh, the applicant indicated, um, and, and brought up a number of, um, uh, precedents that they felt backed or substantiated uh, their proposal. Staff, uh, looked at a number of those. There were, there were quite a few. Uh, we noted some things. In some cases, they were current. Other cases, they, uh, dated back, uh, many years, twenty, thirty, forty, uh, in some cases, uh, more than fifty years. Uh, and in a number of ways, the projects, um, they all didn't differ, but the majority differed, uh, from the proposal uh, in, in their own unique ways. Uh, other projects, the, um, rear lot was substantially larger, therefore allowing for greater setbacks in terms of, uh, siding a building on the rear parcel, um, at least as compared to the, um, project currently before the city council. Uh, related to that is simply proximity to surrounding structures. In this case, surrounding structures are very proximate to the, um, to the subdivision and in other cases, uh, that's not so. And, and one, uh, kind of fundamental issue, I guess, is simply neighborhood concern. In the previous cases, or a number of previous cases, there wasn't significant or really any, uh, neighborhood opposition. And clearly, in this case, there's, uh, significant concern interest, at least, um, as documented to date, uh, at the, um, at the planning commission level. There, in looking through the cases, uh, there were some mistakes made in the past in terms of consistency, uh, with the zoning code way, based on the way it's written as compared to what, what was, uh, approved in the past. But simply because states' mistakes were made, city is not condemned or forced to repeat those same mistakes. Uh, and I guess the kind of moral of the story is in the end, um, each project really has to stand on its own merits. Final point relates to, um, this question of a, a modified plan. And there was a, uh, a memo that went out to you today. And, um, this is a plan the applicant's going to be submitting tonight. It's actually a plan that came up, uh, back during the planning commission process in September. Uh, as staff understands it or is, uh, has been, uh, described or submitted, it, um, it eliminates the second unit on the, um, on the home on the rear parcel, which does, uh, improve, um, the, um, uh, privacy and massing impacts, uh, but the, um, building still is second sto- uh, two-story. Uh, there's a proposal to add some mature trees to, uh, to screen windows. Um, and it adds, um, a bedroom kind of, uh, in, in, uh, compensation, I guess, for eliminating the second unit on the, uh, on the back parcel. In terms of the plan, and once again, the applicant will be, um, showing it to the commi- to the, uh, council here tonight. But, uh, staff in looking at it felt, feels that, that while it does improve on the privacy issue, it's a, it's a sm- it's a small benefit. The overall impact of the massive, large two-story, uh, homes proposed on both lots is still there, although somewhat lessened by um, the reduction on the, um, the home in the back. Part of the proposal is to, uh, kind of, as I indicated, kind of an exchange for adding or removing the, uh, second unit on the home in the back is to allow, um, additional square footage for the home on the front. And to do so, uh, it requires an interpretation of the code from staff standpoint. It's inconsistent with the way the code is written, essentially. The code as written does not allow the, um, the access way going to the rear parcel to count toward the front parcel in terms of computing FAR. Currently, the, um, home on the front parcel is right at the maximum FAR floor area ratio allowed. And to allow it to, um, to get bigger, uh, or to expand, um, part of that driveway area would need to, uh, the driveway area leading to parcel two would be, need to be counted as part of parcel one. And lastly, uh, staff feels that the, um, where the, the planting is definitely helpful, um, staff feels that there's an overreliance on, on planting. Planting, I think, is from staff's experience is effective if you're trying to avoid a view of something, if you have a building or a home that backs up against some objectionable kind of use and you want to prevent, uh, and screen the view of that from the people in that home. In this situation, we're looking at privacy impacts on the surrounding, uh, homes. And, uh, my guess is, and I think part of the reason, um, conjecture on my part, but that, uh, the applicant's, uh, keen on getting a, a two-story home on both parcels is because there's views to be had outside of, um, from those windows. And, uh, if one uses landscaping as a screening technique- And, uh, if one uses landscaping as a screening technique, if the, um, folks that live in those homes feel that they're impeding the view in some fashion, clearly that landscaping can be str- screened. So I think landscaping is not a bad thing, it's just not a panacea or a, or a cure-all or, or a solution to the privacy impacts. Uh, and just to sum up then, from a recommendation standpoint, staff, uh, recommends that the city coun- council deny the appeal for the reasons discussed, both in this presentation, um, and in the report. Staff also recommends that council deny, uh, the proposal without prejudice. Uh, there are, uh, a number of provisions included in the staff report, different ways of, uh, improving the propos- proposal, and from a staff perspective, uh, better addressing the privacy enassing and other issues. So, uh, denial without prejudice, uh, would allow the applicant, if they so choose or chose to, uh, to modify the plan and come in with revised plan that, uh, that is, uh, consistent or more consistent with those provisions. So, um, that's the end of my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sorry. Council members have any questions, the staff? Okay, seen none. Um, we're going to open up the public hearing, but, uh, a couple of housekeeping items, uh, we're going to limit the applicant to fifteen minutes. And then any other, uh, public comments will be three minutes in length. And then the applicant can come back up for rebuttal, uh, for five minutes at, at the very end of the public comment, so. Yeah. So let's open up the public comment.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I, I, uh, that's a tough act to follow, Victor.
Yeah, and if you could state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, Dave Wright. Uh, I reside here in Santa Elena with my family, my three children and my wife. I'm a member of eighteen thirty-seven Pine Street LLC, along with the applicants, Mike, uh, Mark Kay, my father-in-law, and our family friend, Michael Fawn. I know I have fifteen minutes, so I have to go very quickly through this, um, 'cause there's a lot to get through. And, um, you can change the slide, please. Uh, so, so we're here tonight because, uh, we believe that the planning commission to appeal their decision, I know this is de novo, and I guess it's a whole new hearing, but we're here to, to, to appeal their decision, 'cause they acted arbitrary and capricious in their decision. They established new ru- rules for our, for our project, which they don't apply to anyone else, is a double standard. We followed every rule, every code, every guideline by the city, and yet, we get denied. And other people, and other projects, you know, I don't know what that's based on, but we followed every single rule and every single guideline. If you overturn, if you granted the appeal, you'd be consistent with previous matters that this board has heard on appeal. And lastly, we, we ask for fair treatment, just like any other applicant. People that have lived here thirty, a hundred years, we haven't. I've lived here six years, but we like fair treatment, just like any other applicant. Uh, real quickly, uh, just quick site plan. There's a, uh, my pointer doesn't work on the screen. So we have a front, we have a flag lot situation here. We don't have an actual flag lot. The back lot is, uh, is an easement, uh, through the front lot. We have two homes, they're not McMansions. Uh, staff just said they're massive homes. The back house is a massive home. It's a twenty-three-hundred-square-foot house. That's hardly massive in town. That's pretty average. That's probably below average what's being built now, but I would, I would argue with, uh, with staff that that's a massive house. Go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is a, a rendering of the front house. It's, it's a modest twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-six-square-foot home. There's a four-hundred-square-foot guest unit. This was denied by the planning commission. This is the original submitted plan. Moderately-sized home, not a McMansion. I've heard that by opposition, saying these are McMansions. Hardly McMansions. The back house is a barn-inspired, inspired. A lot of these going up in town. I've seen them all over the place. This is twenty-three-hundred square foot. There's a four-hundred-square-foot guest unit that was denied by the planning commission. We have an alternate plan that removes that, which would change that. And like I said, staff just said this is a massive house. This is hardly a massive house. It's twenty-four-hundred square feet. Just some quick notes, when we purchased this property, the, the, the property was, was marketed as a potential lot split. So the sellers had that in mind for buyers like us to come in and research that with the city, which we did. We met with the former planning director or interim planning director, Greg Desmond. He told us this was ideal. It's a perfect, perfect lot to be split. The way the topography of it, the shape of it, the existing houses around it, the distances there are, it'd be ideal. We relied on the city's advice, and we purchased this property. It was consistent with the general plan, they told us, and also the zoning. Some quick design highlights, they're family homes. They're architecturally designed to keep the historical character of the west side. And we, uh, we mitigated the second-floor privacy concerns. That was a big concern of ours. We mitigated those. Staff doesn't believe landscaping is. We believe it does. We elevated wi- we'll send, uh, window height sills, so you can't just sit in front and look out a window down. It's almost five feet high. So our alternative design option, which I'm not even sure if the city council has even seen it, we don't know that. We got no feedback from the staff whether this is presented. We don't know if you've seen this or not. I mentioned some of this to some of you when I met with some of you. Uh, those highlights on the alternative option, we propose to remove the rear house, guest house facing the Potts property. That also eliminates an exterior staircase, second-floor windows. It also pushes back the second floor of the, of the back house, an additional fourteen feet from the property line. So there's not a large wall facing the massing scale. It pushes it back. It's a pretty big distance. Staff is trying to say it's a quid pro quo. We, we, we do this, you get that. These are separate issues. We're, we're, we're trying to mitigate the privacy concerns by the pots, by removing the guest, guest house in the back. Separate issue, we're also asking for fair treatment. Recently approvals by the city include sixteen-foot driveway easements. We're being required twenty. My understanding, this is always historically comes from the fire department. They're okay with twen- with sixteen feet. That's why it's been approved in the past, and that's why it's not an issue. But with our property, twenty feet is, is being asked. Not getting treated fairly. We're being treated against. And all we're asking for is the FAR calculation, which is how big a house, the front house can be, be, be impacted. We're not changing the width of the driveway. We're not changing the width of any landscaping. It's exactly the same as if there was a twenty-foot required driveway and land, and, and landscaping easement. Driveway's still sixteen feet wide. There's still landscaping, two feet on each side, or more on one side. So we're not, we're not asking for anything different. We're just asking that we're treated fairly, just like everyone else, when they get sixteen-foot driveways, to calculate how big a house can be built on the front lot. And lastly, part of this, uh, proposal to the city, to the city council and the city, was a global resolution regarding all pending claims between the parties. I don't know if that was ever discussed with the city council. City staff has said that we took this offer off the table. That's clearly not true. We've never said it's off the table. It's always been on the table. We're open to this proposal. So by the back house, the alternative, this, this faces the Potts house. So if we remove the back guest house, there are no second, there's no staircase, there's no second-floor windows. That eliminates a huge amount of privacy concerns by the Potts. No one can be on the second floor and looking down in their yard or their house. Their house is many feet away. It's very far distance. But there's no privacy issues from this proposed removal of the guest house. Also, staff says it's not a significant change in mass. It's a thirty-four percent reduction in the second floor, a thirty-four percent reduction. I consider that's a, that's a significant, it's not five percent, it's not ten percent. It's thirty, it's a third smaller. That is a significant change in mass. Uh, the next page, it's, this is hard to see. I'll go quickly through this. By allowing the F A R to be expanded somewhat, so we're removing for, proposing four-hundred-feet removal of the back house, staff suggested it's a like-for-like. It's not. Allowing the FAR in the front to be sixteen feet for the calculation for the driveway versus twenty, it allows for about a hundred fifteen square feet for the front house, which would allow for a third bedroom on the main house. Instead of a two-bedroom house, it'd be a three-bedroom house. So that, that's not like-for-like. It's clearly different. It's twenty-five percent of what we're taking off in the back. So we're appealing the planning commission decision because they acted arbitrary and capricious. They made their decision based on inappropriate and factual errors presented by staff, which he admits there were staff errors. They relied on those to make their decision. And our, and again, our project meets every rule and code that the city has. So here's a couple notable quotes. So Tracy Sweeney, the planet, newest planning commissioner, she said about two weeks before our hearing, what this rule really boils down to is whether the commissioners are going to approve two-story houses or not. There's a war on two-story houses in Santa Elena. That's not in the code. That's being done by fiat through the planning commission. So regardless of the merits, is it two stories? No. We're not doing it. It's not fair. Next one is councilmember Kroll on a recent, uh, this is a couple of years ago on Stockton Street. They had the same kind of issue. She felt, and this was from the minute, she felt that the planning commission decision was subjective and mystified her because they're using some erroneous way to define character, where the size of the house is the character. It's not the character. And I'm mystified as well on our property. And the last quote here is from one of you, maybe you shouldn't make as much profit on the flag lot home. I would argue that profit and loss is not a required finding, whether you approve or disapprove a project. So we're saying, w- our argument is that the project as submitted, that's going down, okay, is consistent with neighborhooded scale and character. There are no pri- significant privacy losses. It's significant. It's not a privacy loss, it's significant. Using their definition of character is arbitrary and capricious. The definition of understanding their scale is wrong. They don't, I don't, I'm not sure if they understand what scale means. We'll get that in a sec. So their definition of character is purely floor area ratio. It's an equation. You're walking down Allen Street, and you're looking at the houses. It's not the beautiful landscaping. It's not the architecture. It's not the feel, the neighborhood. It's an equation. It's how big is the house? How big is the lot? What's that percentage? That's the staff's definition of character. That's what the planning commission's definition of character is. The next item is that, uh, the appro- FAR is the current standard of how big you can. It's a limit. It's not a guideline. Can you go over that FAR number? No, you can't. It's a limit. It's not a guideline. If it's a guideline, you could go over, you could go under, you could, it's a limit. It's what you're allowed to do. It's not a stand, it's not a definition of character. That changes the rules, and it's capricious. Hasn't been approved by the city. It's both arbitrary and capri- capricious. And the FAR chart used by the, by the, um, by the staff was errors. He mentioned this. Uh, they did an FAR analysis, how big are we compared to other in the neighborhood? They're eighty-five percent wrong. All the pink ones on this schedule were incorrect. All detrimental to us. So what is character? What I think a reasonable person would define character? It's architectural design, it's landscaping, uniform land use, it's single-family homes versus multifamily apartments. It's honoring the history of the area. So what is the character in the west side of Main Street? That, that has to be, that has to be defined. It's eclectic. There's detached single-family residences. There, there's one and two-story homes all over the place. It's heavily agricultural influence on the architecture. And most of the flag lots have two-story homes. So real quick, here's some architecture right in the immediate neighborhood of our project. Contemporary Barn, this is right across the street. Right next to that is like a six-hundred-square-foot, uh, bungalow. Next to our property is the Potts property. It's kind of a mid-century bungalow. There's a colonial right around the corner. It's about four thousand feet. The next one, some of the more, uh, common ones are farmhouses. Here's one right down the street. This is on Pine Street, just a few houses away. This one also is on Allen, or a few houses away. Sorry, I'm going fast, 'cause I only have three minutes left. Uh, the next one is, uh, is another one. This is another, uh, typical architecture. Some of the flag lots, most of the flag lots have two-story houses, fifteen-twenty-seven Allen. You can see this from our project. There's a two-story house, large. It's thirty-four hundred square feet. This one is the old mayor's house. This one's on Madrona, right around the corner. Two-story house. This is the Fish residence, I believe. This is seventeen-eleven Otter. That's a much different scale. That's, that almost is three-story house. That's on a flag lot. This one's on Spring Street, another one. Notice there's windows on every side of this one. There's another one. But every, almost every single one. Uh, here's what the, the planning commission has reproved, uh, lately. All these FARs are pretty much at the max. All the ones with the red marks are two-story houses. Why are they denying ours? We're the same as everyone else. They did a one-story and two-story analysis, filled with holes. Go to the next one. We did our own. Oh, we're the white property in the middle. The pink are two-story homes. The green is one-story. About sixty percent of the homes in the immediate area surrounding our property are two-story homes. They're not, staff uses an arbitrary area to, to, able to make their argument that there's less than, that there's more one-story homes. So quickly on scale, left house, that's me on the photos, different scale. Same house, different scale. House on the left, ten, had ten-foot, ten-foot, uh, front door, larger scale. House on the right, standard. That's what you see on the west side. Six-eight doors, uh, ten-foot or eight-foot ceilings. That is scale. It's not the size. It's a proportion of those, those, those items to the house. So here's, so they're saying we're not consistent on the scale. This is right down the street, about five houses away. That's our first, exact same scale. Exactly the same scale. Exactly the same scale as virtually every other house in Santa Elena. The next one, this is the back house. This is across the street, Brad and David's house. The back house, very similar, similar scale, almost similar architecture, a little different, but, uh, but very similar in scale. We're no different than any other house in Santa Elena on scale. So quickly, I have a minute here. There's no way I'm gonna get this finished. The privacy, uh, it's, threshold is significant. Go to the next one, please. The steps we've taken, we've eliminated and moved windows. This is on both, on the denied plan and the redesigned plan. Uh, we, we raised second-floor window single heights. We eliminated and moved windows in some cases. We added the mature olive trees. Get staff and, and opposition says that's not gonna cut it. Well, I can tell you that someone living in these houses aren't gonna cut their trees down to look at the neighbor's houses. That, that's not, that's not what their, the view is. The view is looking up, maybe in the hills. It's not looking down in someone's yard. So the argument that someone's gonna cut a tree down to look at their neigh- the neighbor's house is ridiculous. They also said that there's not a significant distance between the houses. There are significant, huge differences between the houses. Tip, some of the ones that are older homes here, there's ten feet, twenty feet. Well, our houses are forty feet, sixty feet, ninety-five feet, eighty-two feet, ninety-five feet, a hundred feet, sixty-seven feet. Those are major difference. Those are almost lots away. I have four seconds here.
We waited a year to come here. Can we have a few minutes to finish?
No, I'd like to stick to the, uh, stick to the time. Well, man, I'm, you're not a, that's it. Thank you, David. So is there any other additional, uh, comments?
Hi, Tracy Sweeney, fourteen oh seven Kearney Street. And I hadn't intended to talk tonight, but I did see I was quoted up there, and I would like to point out I was misquoted up there. As pla- in the planning commission meeting, I think that the applicant is referring to, we were discussing the Allen Street property. And the quote that I made, and I would invite all of you to go back and review the tapes, basically said, and we were deciding to make the applicant go back and bring back new plans. And I was trying to point out the fact that we, as commissioners, need to be talking about that house, were we willing to approve a two-story house before we put this applicant through the process of going back and revising plans. Had nothing to do with a broad statement on two-story homes or one-story homes in Santa Elena, nor do I believe any of the commissioners took it that way. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Claire Pot. Um, I live at the house next door, uh, eighteen forty-nine Pine Street, with my husband and two kids. I've spoke before at the planning commission, and I feel like, you know, three minutes isn't very long, but, uh, and I feel like I was adequately heard there. Um, but I just wanted to point out a few things. I heard the word massing, not massive, when Victor was discussing the, the, the scale of the homes, which I think is a completely different thing, and which I think is relevant and is real. Because what he's trying to say, what I understand and what I feel also, is that, uh, it's not the scale of either of the houses necessarily that's objected to, but the fact that they're both right there next to each other on what will actually then be quite, two quite ordinary, in fact, smaller on, uh, in scale lots than, than is typical for our neighborhood. As the map that, uh, David showed you illustrated, all the street, all the houses on our side of the street are one-story, uh, large, uh, small-ish homes on large lots. And, um, in fact, across the street, it seems to me, at least in one case or two, where there are flag lots, um, it's a second-story house in the back, but still only a single-story house in the front. I don't think in the neighborhood, there's all that many examples of two, two-story homes packed in in such great, uh, concentration. But there were a couple of other things. But actually, what I'd really like to get, I'm putting my hat, my other hat on for a second, because, um, yes, of course, I'm an interested party, 'cause I live right next door. But it also seems to me that something that hasn't been addressed- But it also seems to me that something that hasn't been addressed at all in this, um, proposal, but that gives me great concern, is the use of water and the economics that they've, they've conjured to justify the use of, and the building of an entirely new home and pool, uh, on the back where there currently is just nothing but a couple of dried-out fruit trees. Um, I know they proposed to replace the toilet at Via Corona with a low-flow toilet. Well, I went into Via Corona and took a photograph of the toilet. It's one-point-six gallons, which is, according to Wikipedia, that is a low-flow toilet. I think when I reread, um, their, uh, their proposal, they're proposing to use a, I think, a one-point-two-eight. I think that might be the new standard. And it's true, there are a lot of toilets that flush at lower capacity than one-point-six gallons these days. But the Wikipedia article that I read also indicated that there are problems, particularly where they are used in hotels and restaurants, because, um, the amount of solid waste isn't propelled enough and people do get a problem with buildup. So I just wanna put that out there as a concerned citizen of St. Helena. Um, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Michael Bothwell, fourteen thirty-one Allen Avenue. I actually am on the other side of the property that's proposed. Um, I do wanna bring up one point. Uh, it was brought up that there's no significant, um, change to privacy. And I think what was brought up tonight, even in the alternative plan, uh, maybe were changes to visual privacy. But what I would remind the council of tonight is, privacy is not only defined by vision, but privacy is also defined by auditory. So any intimate moments I may be having with my children, wife, occurrences in my backyard in fourteen thirty-one now, are gonna be very much compromised by a second flag lot unit that's still two stories right behind my house. So, uh, just a consideration to remember. It was proposed, even this was brought up at the planning commission. And, uh, just would like you city council members to be aware of that as well. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name's Randy Chase. And I'm here with my wife Bernadette to voice our opposition to the prop, uh, proposed development. We own the three adjoining parcels to the east of the proposed property and two others at Hudson and Pine, which are all within the three-hundred feet. The building of two-story homes in our backyards will intrude on our privacy and that of our tenants. They were mitigating the other side, the pot side of showing privacy. We have three properties on the other side. They're not mitigating our privacy. Uh, it will block our, uh, mountain views that we've had for four generations. Uh, that is not a concern to them because their houses will now have mountain views. With two-story houses overlooking our properties, it will adversely affect our enjoyment of our own properties. And in order to, in order to approve a flag lot, according to the regulations, it must not adversely affect its neighbors' privacy and views, which his proposal will do. The parcel also does not meet the minimum width requirements for the back lot. The applicant had stated at previous meetings that the landscaping and trees will protect our privacy, but the landscaping and trees are on our property, not theirs. Uh, and if they plant trees, what's to stop a buyer from removing them later? Uh, building two maximum square-footage homes does not fit into the neighborhood of smaller homes on large lots. As you see, as you see tonight and at previous planning meetings, surrounding residents are opposed to this project and have adamantly voiced their opinion. This project is ill-conceived and nothing but an attempt to maximize one group's profit at the expense of the city and its neighbors. The only motivating factor is profit. No thoughts or concerns or attempts to fit in or be a member of the community and to preserve, uh, the St. Helena we all love so much. The additional traffic and parking required will change the character, look, and appeal of our neighborhood. In addition, the higher density will create more noise pollution infringing on our peace and tranquility. One of the reasons people wanna live in St. Helena. The water issues concern us all in St. Helena. They're trying to convince you that two large homes with, with pools will use less water than the existing home. This type of math is ludicrous because all they're don't, all they're doing is donating two low-flow, flow toilets. I may not be a water expert, but simple logic tells me they all think we're stupid. Uh, if we can believe this. Uh, I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Burton and I reside at fifteen oh one Allen Avenue, which is sort of kitty-corner from the subject property. Uh, I was born and raised in St. St. Helena and inherited the little house that I now live, live in. In fact, my father built it. Um, Bernadette, Bernadette and I basically grew up together. And you can imagine, we've seen a lot of changes in the town and in our neighborhood specifically. I have never spoken out in opposition to any project in our neighborhood. But I felt compelled to do so, uh, at this project because of the impact it's going to have on the neighborhood. As I believe Claire pointed out, one of the reasons we're so opposed is because they, they're basic, taking, taking one modest, uh, one, single-family home and creating two large, two, two large homes on, um, on this proposed lot. In addition to the privacy concerns, the water concerns, uh, these folks really don't seem to be taking into account the modest homes that currently exist in this neighborhood. They certainly didn't show pictures of the homes that aren't two-story homes and, uh, have extensive modern landscaping in the neighborhood. They selected out those homes that supported, um, the alleged point they were making. And, you know, they seem to have worked themselves up into this, this feeling that they're being picked upon and treated arbitrarily. Um, and I just don't see that happening. Just because the code, these FAR regulations allow a certain maximum, doesn't mean that the house should be built to that maximum. That's when the character of the neighborhood comes in. And as the attorney that was advising the planning commission correctly pointed out, I thought that neighborhood character is not subjective. That if you, it, they, what is, what they do is take a look at the surrounding houses, look at the setbacks, look at the measurements, and look at the footprint. And that's how they determine neighborhood character. The reason I've never opposed any other project is because those folks that have come in and built in our neighborhood have, while they've tremendously upgraded the, the properties that they've undertaken, they have kept the neighborhood character. Yeah, the homes are set back from the street. They remain single-family homes, um, at least on the front of the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Brad Nickenson at eighteen forty-two Pine Street. Uh, we're directly across from the proposed project. And, uh, to be honest, I'm here in support of our neighbors. The project would actually be an improvement for us to look at across the street compared, uh, to what we look at now. Um, and so really here, because when this has come up before, and this is the third time that we've been at a meeting, two at planning, uh, planning committee and first time here, uh, it seemed to me that it's been very clear that the planning commission has been looking at the municipal code for creation of a flag lot. I understand now it's not a flag lot, but when the planning commission was looking at this, it was a flag lot being proposed. And there were three criteria. And at least, uh, in my mind, two of those criteria, and most importantly, privacy, was severely impacted by every neighbor surrounding that property. So I don't think there was any issue about fairness or arbitrariness here. The planning commission was simply following the municipal code. And, uh, I think my feeling in looking at this is either the applicant needs to start talking to his neighbors, which he has not done, uh, and was recommended that he do at the last planning commission meeting, uh, or he goes and changes the municipal code. Um, it, it, it's just very sad that I think we're here again, uh, in this situation. And that someone wants what they want and they're not really taking into consideration, uh, anything else or really listening to anything else from anybody else. And they're just kind of going full speed ahead. Um, and, and again, it's just, it's very sad. They could really do some wonderful things on that property. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, David Devon, uh, eighteen forty-two Pine Street. A couple clarifications. They highlighted our lot as pink, as a two-story house, but we have a twenty-nine-hundred, uh, new, single-story house in the back. And there's a disconnected, uh, rental unit, a second unit in the front. We chose that because we didn't want any of those windows looking into our neighbors' backyards and windows. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I agree with everything that Claire was saying and everybody else before. This is now our third time. Um, and I like that you pointed out mass and massive. We're trying to take beautiful lot, create smaller lots with bigger homes. So that's where I think we talked about mass and, and, uh, compounding everybody's views. Our lot is just under twelve thousand, over eleven thousand square feet. It's very long and has lots of gardens, but you know, I hope I didn't move to a town that is allowing everybody to build to the setbacks because you're allowed to. Um, one of the staff members recommended to the commissioner made a point of saying, just because these guidelines are here, we, you, you have to take it into account because then there would be no point of having a planning commission. There'd be no plan of having you. So you do have to look at those properties individually. I was the only one that stood up at the beginning and said, I'm not against a, a, a flag lot. I'm not against two, two homes on that property. I would have loved to have done that. But not two, two-story houses with attached units or whether one's been taken away and they're putting it up in the front. Because even though they're twenty-four-hundred-square-foot homes, there's still a three or four-hundred-square-foot attached unit, so the, the bulk is still there. Um, those are my thoughts. I hope you all do the right thing. It's a great street to live on. Unfortunately, we're all dealing with a lot of stress and tension with the, this project.
Thank you.
So is there any other published comments? Then I'll invite the applicant to, for a five-minute rebuttal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dave Trotter. Um, I'm, uh, the attorney for the appellant's and applicant's, Mark Hay. Like you, I'm also an elected council member in the town of Maraga, so I have some appreciation for what you do as a public service. So I appreciate having this opportunity to address the, the council this evening. I just have a few points. I wanna speak to the timeliness of the appeal. Uh, because we believe that the appeal is timely and that the city is legally stopped from contending otherwise. Um, and if you look at the record here, the February third, two thousand and fifteen, planning commission agenda contained a statement that a person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may appeal that decision pursuant to section seventeen point oh eight point one eight oh, and then goes on, absent an appeal by the city council or by a citizen, the appeal period will terminate two weeks after the planning commission hearing. In other words, fourteen days. That's what the section provides for. And that's what the planning commission and the staff said at the conclusion of the February third, two thousand and fifteen hearing before the planning commission. They made the standard announcement that there's a fourteen-day appeal period. We relied on that. We actually filed our appeal, um, on the thirteenth day. Uh, and we were entitled to do that, to rely on the statements by the city. So the city, I believe, has stopped legally from contradicting its fourteen-day appeal statements now. And the city suffers no prejudice from considering this appeal fully on its merits. Um, and why is that? Um, because any delay here in getting this appeal heard is actually the fault of the city. This matter was supposed to have been heard at your March twenty-four, two thousand and fifteen hearing. That's what we were told by the city attorney's office. I was advised by the assistant city attorney in the first part of March that the staff had failed somehow to send out the required public hearing notices in a timely manner. So this appeal has slipped to April fourteenth. But that's not our fault. And the fact is that the, the, the timing of our appeal has no bearing at all on the ability of the ci, the city to process the appeal and for this, the, the city to basically ultimately make a decision on the full merits. Second point is that, um, contrary to the staff report, the redesign of the homes at eighteen thirty-seven Pine Street does remain on the table as an alternative package proposal for approval of this project by the council. And we have a memo that came in this evening, um, some points. Um, the fact of matter is that it minimizes the reducing in massing. And, uh, this is a massing question. Um, there's been a substantial reduction in the massing on the rear lot. Um, and it has resulted in significantly reduced privacy impacts. And note that the word in the code is significant, not all privacy impacts. But if you've, if there is no significant loss of privacy or impact on privacy, then the finding has to be made. Uh, the fact that certain neighbors are, are concerned about auditory privacy or things like that, that's not a significant concern. The fact is that if you have somebody living next to you in a neighborhood like the west of Main Street area, you may have some people being able to hear what's happening in your yard. But that is not a privacy impact that is significant. And we've done a lot since the February third hearing, uh, to reduce the privacy impacts. Um, and so I think that needs to be taken into account. That alternative proposal's in play. We would ask you to give it the fair consideration that it deserves. And with regard to, um, the width of the easement, uh, we, we basically are asking for consistent treatment with the seventeen oh one Madrona Avenue project. But we're talking about a twenty-foot-wide area. We're talking about bridging and coming up with a creative solution, something that this city I know prides itself on. It's in your mission statement, right there at the back of the room, that bridges that difference. So that you have a sixteen-foot-wide drive, fully accessible. Um, but you give us the FAR credit so we can have a three-bedroom house. Not a McMansion, a very, very small, modest home on the front side. Um, that seems to us to be a win-win for everybody concerned. And, you know, in fact, it'll be better than what happened at seventeen oh one A Madrona because there we're going to have the, the, you know, instead of being a very narrow, unlandscaped area, you have the full landscape treatment that you would be entitled to. So on the ground, you'll have everything that you have under the code, but you're giving this, this application a small benefit, which is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, which is for beautiful homes, a farmhouse design and a barnhouse design. One last point, because I'm out of time, um, is the water issue, which has been talked about tonight. You have a report from, can I finish my sentence? Can we have the stop button turn off? Thank you. Um, you have a report from your staff and a report provided by the applicant that makes it very clear that the, the, there's been compliance in full with the requirements of the city with respect to water mitigation. That's not a basis for denying this project. So we would ask that you approve, grant this appeal, approve this project as redesigned. And I'm here to, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
So is there any more public comments? I will close the public hearing. I'll try to close the public comment portion and open discussion with the council.
I wanna clarify one point first. Someone, one of the comments mentioned that, um, privacy in flag lot creation included preserving views of existing homes. Is that, I don't see that in, in the quote of seventeen point one-one-two point one zero-zero, section I. But is that intercode or not?
It, I, I don't believe the code. And if you have it in front of you, I'd go with that as opposed to my memory. I, I don't believe it discusses protecting views. It definitely discusses, um, privacy impacts, as indicated. Uh, the, the word is significant privacy impacts. And there's other language in there, um, related to impacts on neighboring, um, homes. I don't recall the exact verbiage.
Can you also comment, I didn't hear it covered, maybe I missed it, but on the parking situation with the second units?
Right. The code for a second unit requires an additional parking space. And from an operational point of view, that space cannot be just simply in the driveway and back of someone's garage. of view, that space cannot be just simply in the driveway in back of someone's garage. The plans as proposed show a space that kind of diagonally angles onto Pine Street, and so that arrangement is not workable. And it's, I think there may be a design solution there. I don't think that's one of the unsolvable or an unsolvable aspect of the project. I think that it may be possible to get a workable parking solution on the front lot, but the way it is right now, it's not workable.
Can I just, you have other questions?
No.
There's a quote in here, and I recognize at least some of the quote, but it has been misquoted, and it's, Mr. Wright has said here a notable quote, "Maybe you shouldn't make as much profit on the flag lot home." Those are words taken from me, but misquoted. I, about a month and a half ago, met with Mr. Wright on the property to get a lay of the land, to view the land, and the quote is this, "There are some people in the community who say that you shouldn't be able to make a profit on that second home." And then we talked a little bit more, and I made it very clear that I do not subscribe to that notion at all. In fact, it was actually stated here today, and I think it was stated at the planning commission. So I'm very disheartened, to say the least, that that quote was put into this argument to say, to really say the opposite of what I intended and what I meant. I would have never said something like that. It was in the context of a conversation where Mr. Wright was describing the project, the benefits of the project, and I asked him, "Well, what are the objections?" And in the course of that discussion, I said, "And there are some people who say you shouldn't make a profit either." And I made it very clear that I do not subscribe to that at all, didn't at the time, and I want Mr. Wright to know that, and I hope his council will let him know my feelings on that. It's not going to, I'm an attorney. I've been doing land use for 27 years. Everybody who comes in front of me is going to get a fair hearing. It's not going to be based on profit motive. I have clients who make profit. If they all thought I was against people making profit, I wouldn't be in business. So I just wanted to be very clear on that. I'm, you know, the legal process is daunting and very restrictive, and it's cumbersome, and it doesn't allow us to move forward sometimes in the way that we need to. The proposal, this alternative proposal is intriguing for, you know, I'm interested in it. I don't think that the city, in my view, legally can do this trade with the FAR. So I'm, you know, I see that the applicants are making great strides to move forward in the right direction. I'm still not comfortable with that part of it, the trade with the FAR and having that property be counted on the front property. So I'm having a little difficult time on that one. Frankly, I haven't had a whole lot of time to evaluate this modified proposal, and I would recommend, you know, wherever this goes, that the applicants can always go back because it's the recommendation here, if we do it according to the recommendation, is without prejudice. A lot of work has been done on this project. My basic concern is not so much the neighborhood and the character, but the two houses right next to the project, in particular, the modest homes that are right next door to this project on both sides. So, you know, when those folks moved in there, they never expected to have two-story homes, two two-story homes, right next to their, they're very modest homes, one-story homes. And that's troubling to know that you're going to have, even without the windows, there's still a massing effect, and in my view, there's still a loss of privacy. I'm having a real difficult time, you know, seeing that house and having myself being in the pot's backyard or in the pot's house or the other neighbors on the other side and not feeling offended in terms of massing and privacy. So the other issues, some of the legal issues, yeah, I mean, you've got, there are problems with the rear width, there's problems with the parking. In my view, there's problems with the width of the easement, the 20-foot easement. I think that is a problem legally. I think there's a problem with the timeline in terms of appealing the denial of the parcel. All those things can be worked out if we have a project that can be reviewed again by the planning commission. That's kind of where I'm leaning, and I'm just talking out loud. I don't know where this is going to go. I'm not willing or ready to say the planning commission got it wrong. I think the planning commission studied this in great detail, and unless a planning commission really does something egregiously, arbitrarily, you know, capriciously, I show great deference to our planning commission. Our planning commission worked hard on this project, and I'm not seeing that they made the wrong call here. But there's, you know, this is a project that will continue to get worked on, I hope, to the benefit of the city. So those are my comments. I'm just willing to, I'm trying to get a dialogue going.
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Well, I just wanted to add, I was, you quoted somebody who quoted me, and I don't know where this is coming from because I don't think it's meeting minutes, but it is also completely out of context. It was, it had to do strictly with the placement of a garage on a property. It had nothing to do with anything that was related to things that are at issue in this case. I, this is the way I feel about this project. With respect to the appellate issues, there were two timeframes that applied in this case, and I agree with the staff that it was the applicant's responsibility to determine the period applicable. Ignorance of the law is not a defense. So I think that the city has every right to assert that argument. I also think that the, it's irrelevant to me what has gone on in the past. We have to follow the municipal code. So that 20-foot driveway is not a negotiable situation, and I don't care when it was followed or not followed or anything. All of that is completely irrelevant. We are following our code now, and that is the guideline. And in that sense, I do think the planning committee, the planning commission got it right when they found that the three specific findings were not, to establish, to create the flag lot, were not supported by this project. And I think that the planning commission got it right. I agree with Paul that in order to overturn the planning commission's decision, it has to be something pretty, pretty strong. I do not believe the planning commission acted arbitrarily or capriciously. I think they acted with a lot of thought, and I would be, I am in favor of denying this appeal without prejudice to the applicants bringing it back. I also, I received this revised plan at 5:00 today, which did not allow me adequate time to evaluate it.
I want to point out that it's not really just the two neighbors to the left and the right. You've got six lots surrounding this that I think all get impacted by two-story conditions. I just want to add, I agree with everything that's been said. I want to add a few things. With respect to flag lot creation, which is probably the gating issue, if you can't accept the findings to create a flag lot, then everything else is somewhat moot. That said, I can't say that this flag lot will not result in significant loss of privacy. You're going from one unit to four units. You're going from one family to four families. It could have, who knows how many people. It could have, who knows how many cars. I can't say that there won't be excessive noise by going from one to four. I can't say that there won't be, you know, parking congestion when you're, who knows how many cars each of those four homes might have at some point when their kids are teenagers. So I can't get beyond the flag lot creation. So the rest, to me, while there are deficiencies and violations of our code and our law, I think that needs to be worked out. And so if there is a redesign, frankly, you know, I'm not wearing a planning commission hat anymore. I think the purview for that is the planning commission. So I'd love to see the neighbors and the applicant and appellant here work this out, come back with an alternative design, but go talk to the planning commission first and see if it can be worked out in that venue.
So I agree with all three of you that there's no project before us here that the IC should overturn that the planning commission decided. So I agree with staff that, you know, we can deny this without prejudice, so give the applicant a chance to come back and present something that is within our codes and such. So I'll entertain a motion. If there's no other discussion.
I'll move to deny the appeal without prejudice.
I second that.
Just for clarification, that would be with the council adopting the findings presented to you in the resolution in the staff packet this evening?
Exactly.
With the council adopting the findings presented to us in the staff presentation.
It might also be appropriate, if this is your determination and your feeling, to consider adding to those findings something saying that you did consider the proposed revisions presented by the applicant, and you either did or didn't find them persuasive. I'm hearing from the council that you didn't find those persuasive for overturning or reaching a different conclusion.
So I'll restate it. I move to overturn the appeal or not support the appeal based on the findings presented in the staff report tonight and add that we did look at and discuss the proposed revisions and did not find that those would change our decision and outcome.
I had already seconded it, but that's okay. I don't care.
Change the motion, but that's fine. I'll second it.
Councilor Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes. So that ends item 20, and let's see. So we adjourned the meeting, and our next meeting, our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for April 28 at 6:00 PM here at Vinnich Hall. Thank you.